All right, City Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Saffordin. Here. Alderman Revelle.
Here.
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Clerk Reed. So I believe we have all of our aldermen here except Alderman Rainey, and I expect that she'll be joining us shortly. So welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 Special City Council Meeting. We are having this meeting on a Tuesday because, as everyone knows, yesterday was MLK Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I know there were many celebrations of Dr. King and his vision that he had, you know, 60 and 50 and 60 years ago for this country and that we still have today. So thank you to everyone that participated in a variety of remembrances yesterday.
Mayor, would you like me to suspend the rules?
Yes, Alderman Wilson, if you would move to suspend the rules so we can do this virtually?
Sure. I move that we suspend the rules to allow us to conduct the meeting utilizing the Zoom software in lieu of an in-person meeting and in accordance with the governor's prior directives relating to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Second. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please, on that motion?
Yes, Alderman Rue Simmons. Alderman Saffordin. Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
And Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk. So on an
I'm an I.
Just that's where On an eight to zero And Alderman Wilson, on an eight to zero vote, the motion to suspend the rules to allow this meeting to take place virtually due to the pandemic has passed. Eventually, we will get back to holding these meetings in person in the council chambers and with residents with us once it's safe for all of us to do so. Just a couple announcements up front. On the positive side, I want to just let folks know that thanks to your good work over the last, really, two months or so since we put the mitigation measures in place, both throughout the region, EMS Region 10 and our city, the COVID-19 numbers have gone down. Now, that's because of a lot of sacrifice. People haven't been able to work out really in their gyms other than individual workout sessions. They haven't been able to have any group sessions. We have not been able to have people in our recreation centers and in all of that. The good news is that the numbers, both at the state level, the region level, and in our city, continue to go down. Today, IDPH announced that we are going to move from Tier 3 mitigation measures to Tier 2 mitigation measures. So that means some of the restrictions are going to loosen up, including the use of our community centers. So there will be more information coming out this week in our messaging from the city in the Thursday update on what those loosened restrictions are and how we can and how we'll be able to operate moving forward with Tier 2 mitigation measures. The numbers, just to share with people today, we had 11 cases in Evanston. Our positivity rate for the last seven days has been 1.32%, so very, very low. Part of that is due just to the high volume of testing that's going on at Northwestern University. As people know, Northwestern now has freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors on campus. Their positivity rate has been less than 1%. Last, my meeting, pandemic task force meeting last week, it was like 0.6%. So we're not seeing any big uptick or anything because of the students coming here. There's a lot of surveillance going on. That depresses our positivity rate, which is good. But, you know, if you took all that testing out, our positivity rate would be higher. It would still be lower than some of the comparable areas. We know that because before the students came back, we were pretty much lower than Chicago and Skokie at that time. Our seven-day moving average is a little less than 17 cases. And at the state level, they had 4,300 cases today and a positivity rate of a little less than 6% statewide. So these numbers are looking good. So that's positive news. So I know we're all anxious to get the vaccine, but let's continue to socially distance and not overly expose ourselves to one another, wear our masks and everything. That makes a huge difference. Second, on the positive news, today, we moved to Phase 1B with vaccinations. And I just real quick want to let people know, because I know I and I'm sure the aldermen have been getting some emails from folks saying, hey, why haven't I been called up? I filled out that survey of the city. So here's the deal and here's the process. Our Health Department gets a notice from IDPH. And they're never sure exactly when they're going to get this notice that says, you're going to get your next allotment of vaccine. And it's at that time that they tell us how many doses. So this week, or at the end of last week, we got 1,400 doses of the vaccine. Once they know that, then they just pretty much give us a 48-hour window of when we're actually going to have our hands on the vaccine. So we don't have a specific day and time that they will be in your hands, but it's more like a 48-hour window. We then have to quickly stand up a vaccination event. And it's a point where you'll hear this term "pods," so it's a point of distribution. We will stand that up. We have been doing that at the Levy Center. And what the Health Department does is based on the priority list that we have. And everybody's pretty much working off the priority list that CDC has pushed down. They go through and they notify people and they say, there's going to be a vaccination event and it's going to be in two days or three days. You're not going to have a ton of notice. If you miss it and you can't do that one, they will catch you on the next one. All right? So it's sort of like if you miss your flight, you get the next flight. So that's what will happen. And so people have emailed, I know, and said, hey, why can't you just schedule me and tell me, hey, you know, February 20th, I'm going to get my shot? And again, we don't control the dosages and the quantities of vaccination. And so we are, I think we will see, particularly with what's the transition that occurs tomorrow, I think we're going to start to see a larger number of doses that we are going to get. And the Health Department and our City Facility Department are ramping up so that we can move these really quickly. We did have a vaccination event today. I think they did over 400 vaccinations, primarily to emergency responders, so folks in our fire department, in our police department, and all of that. I will tell you that what sometimes happens is literally, at the end of the day, they might find themselves with 20 extra doses because people didn't show up for their appointments or whatever. And then they will rush to use them because we don't want to waste any doses. So it's possible to even get a call at the last minute that says, hey, if you can be here in 30 minutes, we can give you a vaccination. So that's right now what the process is. I think it's going to get better and the quantities are going to increase. I'll take any questions that folks have. And I don't know if we also have our Public Health Director with us because he'll have more details than I am. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can you clarify that last statement? Because that has been something that reported about them having vaccines at the end of the day and them calling people. How would you, who are they calling? What list are they using to call people?
So they are, my understanding, and again, Erica, I don't know if Ike or Greg are on with us, but my understanding is when they have had extra vaccine doses, they are looking at the next people in the priority list. So if they were on police today and they still had additional police officers that weren't on today's schedule, they literally pick up the phone, call over there and say, hey, can these five police officers get here in the next, you know, 30 minutes? And we're going to give them the vaccine. Erica, I don't know if you want to add anything else, if you know any further on that?
No, I have nothing to add further. I was just going to let you know that because we weren't talking about anything related to the Health Department tonight, Ike and Greg are not on the call. So we had a successful event today, though, and we look forward to many more.
And we are going to do a coronavirus Q and A this Friday with a doctor from North Shore Health, a doctor from Amity St. Francis, and our Public Health Director. And that's going to be, I believe, at noon on Friday. So we will be promoting that and that'll go out in the Thursday newsletter. We're getting lots of questions from residents and we're going to try and get those answered at that. So that's the positive news. Two you know, bits of sad news. One is, we had the passing of a legendary jazz pianist this past weekend, who is from Evanston. And his name is Junior Julian Mance. And if Mayor Morton were still alive, she had the opportunity with her boyfriend at the time, Byron, to meet him on a jazz cruise. And Sandra Robinson, who is with the Unitarian Church of Evanston, had emailed me. An incredibly acclaimed, again, jazz pianist who started here in Evanston. And in the middle of a performance that he did about 15 years ago here in town, he was doing a reunion concert at the Unitarian Church when he stopped playing in the middle of a song, turned to the crowd and proclaimed, I am Julian Junior Mance from Evanston, Illinois. And the crowd of 300 people went wild because as he had, you know, reached this pretty famous status, everyone referred to him as being from Chicago. And he wanted to make it very clear, no, I am from the city of Evanston. So our thoughts and prayers are with Junior Mance's family. On his passing, he had a pretty remarkable life and we're glad that that started here in our city. Sadly, I want to acknowledge Marta Torres. Marta Torres is a resident of the city of Evanston. She was a TWE special education paraprofessional at Washington School here in Evanston. And she was the victim last week of just a, about 10 days ago, of a horrendous, horrendous crime in Chicago and in Evanston and was murdered on the IHOP. And just on behalf of everybody in our city, I know our thoughts and our prayers are with her family. It's just a tremendous loss and a very, very hurtful loss for everyone here. And lastly, speaking of losses, we have lost in Evanston 104 people to the COVID-19 pandemic. That's 104 Evanston residents. We are approaching close to 400,000 lives lost in the United States. I think many people view tomorrow as a positive turning point for the country as we inaugurate a new President of the United States. And right now, across the United States and in our own community, there is a moment of silence that's being had and a light service that is going on all across the country, including in the reflection pool at the, down by the monuments in Washington, DC. So I just wanted to ask our council, as well as those that are tuning in tonight, if you would join me in just a moment of silence in remembrance of the 104 residents of our city that have passed away because of COVID-19 and also the close to 400,000 around our country and close to, I believe, over 2 million people in the world. Thank you. Tonight is a special city council meeting and it's special because our primary focus this evening is going to be on housing, which has always been affordable. Housing has always been a challenge and an issue here in Evanston. It's been made worse because of the pandemic. So the city council has to have a special meeting on this topic. We also added one other item to the agenda, which is something that many young people in our community are interested in, which is a skate park. And so those are the two items that we'll be talking about tonight. Before we get to those, though, I'm going to turn to the city manager and ask if you have any announcements tonight.
I have no announcements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have any announcements tonight?
No announcements tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're now going to turn to public comment. And I'm just looking at the list for public comment and I need a minute unless Luke, unless you've already looked at it and can tell me how many total people, because I have to figure out the time that we're allotting. We have quite a large number of speakers tonight.
We're at about 50, Mayor.
50 speakers. All right. Per our rules, we set aside 45 minutes for public comment. We take the total number of speakers and we divide that by there. So let me just do some quick math unless somebody can and tell me already how much, how many seconds we're going to be able to allow people tonight. It's going to be around 50, I believe. All right, so I'm going to give every, I'm going to give everyone that's speaking tonight 55 seconds for public comments. So close to a minute. And we'll time you. If you hear the timer go off, I just need you to stop just so we can be respectful and get to the next speaker. Again, we have a lot of people that want to speak on Zoom housing issues, but maybe other issues tonight. So with that, our first speaker tonight is going to be Sean Ahern, then Susan Phelps, then Gabe Weiss. So welcome, Sean. And if you want to, at this point, if you want to turn on your camera, you can.
I do not see Sean, Mayor.
All right, so let's move to our second one. Do we have Susan with us? Susan Phelps?
Yeah, we're missing Susan Phelps, but I'm in the fill-in for her.
Okay, Alex, well, welcome. We've got 55 seconds, so close to a minute. So you are now on with the Evanston City Council. Welcome.
So like, I think we should have a skate park in the township of Evanston because like me and my friends, we have like no place to go really. So we end up going to Fountain Square. And we have been getting like reports that like some people are not happy about the skateboarders in Fountain Square. So we like are trying to like get someone to like make a skate park for us so we have somewhere to hang out and go to.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Next, we're going to go with Gabe Weiss. Do we have Gabe with us?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, it says Emma. That's my daughter.
All right.
She's in class. So yeah, I'm also advocating for a skate park and not just the young people. I'm 40 and would love to see a skate park here. I also used to skate around Fountain Square, but it was probably in the early 90s when I did that. And seeing the kids still doing it and not having a place to skate is both encouraging but also sad. I think we need to make something that the whole town can utilize. And also pointing out too, that I think a lot of the image that's coming out, especially from how the police report about the complaints about skating in Fountain Square, there's kind of an image of skating. A lot of the modern parks are really fantastic and accessible playgrounds. You can use them for any kind of wheeled activities, wheelchairs, you can even go on them. Pump tracks are something that's amazing. You can use it with bicycles or scooters or anything. And you can just pump around a kind of undulating course and they're a lot of fun. So I think it's something that could bring a lot of good use to the city. And also, they're multi-use in the sense that you can have concerts or special events with them. They're very attractive pieces of installations to the city. So I'll yield the rest of my time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. All right, next up, we've got, I can't, the names cover here, but it's Juan G. We have Juan. There you are, Juan. I can see you. Well, welcome. If you just give your name to the council, I can begin.
Hi, my name's Juan Hettakakis. I'm a 13-year resident of the 9th Ward and I've been skating for over 25 years. And Evanston Skate Park is long overdue and I'm really happy to hear that the city's committed to both a short-term and a long-term solution. I really would like to urge the Park District to work with local skaters in the community to make this happen. If the goal is to, of the skate park is to stop teenagers from skating downtown, you're really going to need input from those kids and ask them what they want to skate and have them involved in the planning. This past year, a group of teenage skaters in my neighborhood started a pop-up skate park at one of the Ridgeville Parks. And there's already a group of community members that are skaters and non-skaters, as well as kids and parents that are in this group that have started to work with Ridgeville to get something permanently done there. And I think it would be a huge missed opportunity for the city to not leverage Ridgeville and this community group. I really feel that there needs to be like a committee to evaluate different designs and bids and for this to be successful and be something that Evanston can really be proud of.
Thank you, Juan. Next up, we've got Brian Everett, then Matthew LaFur, and then Parker Cluster.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can. Welcome, Brian.
Hey, thanks for having me. I grew up in Evanston, went to Evanston Township, graduated '06, grew up in my grandma's house on Main and Asbury. And we used to go to the skate park all the time, right there, Robert Crown, every day. Kept me out of trouble. I still bike to this day. I BMX, so. And it keeps me busy, keeps me out of trouble, even to this day. I go to the park two, three, four times a week. I learned a lot of valuable lessons there. It's transportation for me. I've never really had to buy a car. So passing those lessons on to the youth is definitely a top priority to me when I'm there to make sure that they're using these things as a gateway to advance in life, you know? Same way as I did. My first job was at a bike shop fixing bikes. When I was in college, I paid a lot of my way through college through that bike shop. Yeah, and I just wanted to be a voice. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Matthew LaFur, then Parker Cluster, then Sarah Dryer. Do we have Matthew or Matt LaFur?
I don't think so, Mayor.
Okay, so how about Parker Cluster? Do we have Parker?
We're here. Can you find, can you see us?
Yep, we can see you. Welcome.
It won't let me start the video.
That's okay. Oh, unless, Luke, are you controlling that?
I will turn it on, but please proceed.
All right. Go ahead. Parker.
All right. I am Parker and I'm 11 years old in the 3rd Ward. And I just started skateboarding and I had to drive all the way down to Chicago to a skate park. And I think it'd be great if I could have a skate park in Evanston.
Awesome. Thank you, Parker. All right, next up, do we have Sarah Dryer with us?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, welcome, Sarah. Luke, if we could turn her video on?
I am a 6th Ward Evanston resident and in full support of a skate park. My daughter is actually four and she uses her scooter at the skate park. So we often go to Will Matt to use their skate park. And I'm also a landscape architect by trade, so I've worked on several skate parks. We just completed one with the Vernon Hills Park District, working with Evergreen Skate Parks. And it's a fantastic facility. It's awesome to see the kids out there skating, you know, being able to use scooters, doing BMX, some of the new skate parks that are shotcrete, you know, smooth concrete. They can use all types of equipment on them. And it just opens up, you know, a variety of activities for kids. And I'm fully, full support of it and would highly recommend Evanston having one. So thank you.
So Sarah, can we tap into your expertise and move forward with this?
Sure, sure.
All right, we're going to hold you to that.
Check out Vernon Hills. It's pretty cool.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, we've got Alden. I don't have a last name. It just says Alden.
Hello.
Hi, Alden.
I'm 16. I live on Michigan Avenue. And I was a big part of the Ridgeville skate park. And I just think it's important for us to have a place to practice our sport, just like you have soccer fields and basketball courts. We need a place to practice what we do. And we get kicked out when we go street skating out of everywhere. They tell us we can't be on the sidewalk. They tell us we can't be on the street. So they tell us to go to Northwestern, then Northwestern tells us to go to Evanston. And you shut down our park that we made ourselves, so we have nowhere to kind of go. And I think it's important. And I've had many people actually tell me that they really enjoyed the Ridgeville Park. Even I went into the bakery, I forget the name, the bakery downtown Evanston. And somebody told me that they enjoyed Ridgeville and they wish it was back, like a four-year-old and her mom. So just, that's all.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Alden. Next up, we've got, and I apologize upfront if I'm mispronouncing people's names. It looks like we've got Sei, Seyabo? S E Y E?
Hello?
Or is it shit? Yep. We can hear you. Welcome. And why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, my name's Shay. I'm 22. I've been, I live by King Lab. I've been here all my life and I've been skating basically all my life. And I was basically just thinking like, I was talking, basically what like everyone else was saying, like how we always get kicked out off the streets and off the sidewalks and yada, yada, yada. I talked to a few police officers because they were like, oh, maybe we can try and get you a skate park here and whatever. And I was talking about location. And I don't know if you know by Northwestern, there's the Floyd Longfield? You know, that big? Yeah. So I was talking to them about putting one over there or bringing back Ridgeville Skate Park that got taken down as well. Or like, we just get to like skate in the street. I don't know. Like, it has to be something because being able to not do like what I've been doing my entire life, especially out of nowhere, because I've been skating forever. Like, I haven't never heard about like not being able to skate on the street or not being able to skate on the sidewalk and blah, blah, blah. But like, something has to give, to be honest. So if you guys can fund building a skate park, that would be great.
Awesome. Thank you, Shay. Sounds like we've got a problem we need to solve here. So appreciate it. Next up, we've got Carter Seismeyer. Can I apologize if I mispronounce people's names? We have Carter Seismeyer, and then we'll have Maria Knowles, and then Nathan Wolfe. And then we'll have Maria Knowles and then Nathan Wolfe.
Mayor, I don't think Carter's with us.
All right, so let's go to Maria. If we have Maria Knowles with us? All right, not seeing Maria. How about Nathan Wolfe? We're moving right through. Uh, how about, uh, I don't have a last name here, but Nicholas?
Uh, potentially me.
Oh, hey, hey, Nick, hey, Nick, wel- welcome. Go, go ahead if you want to introduce yourself and uh you've got a minute. Yeah.
So uh, you know, I'll turn it on as well. Uh, so my name is Nick Korsnaski. I live at seven-twenty-six Henman and um I'd like to talk about Lot One um a little bit. You're likely to hear from neighbors of Lot One tonight. Um, and I think a common thread here is going to be that uh a lot of neighbors don't feel very heard right now. And there's a lot of concern about potential rezoning. That may be a moot point at this, at this moment, but there's a lot of concern from neighbors about potentially rezoning our R4 even as high as our six. And there's a lot of concern that if this land is potentially donated, then there ought to be some give for developer to make a, a leading affordable housing project within the confines of an R4 zone. Um, and I'd like to advocate to more discourse to shore up those concerns before a vote on RFP. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh, we're having technical difficulties. Did you call on a, a Knoll?
Yeah, I, I did. So we, we'll, we'll take you right now, Brian. If we've got, we had Maria Knoll sign up?
Yep, well, we've got a couple of comments. So if you call it on Maria first, I'll let her go. And then I think I'm in line somewhere for two different comments.
Oh, that you signed up for one for Maria and one for you. Okay, so we'll, we'll take Maria now. We had her on the list.
Okay.
Hi, sorry about that. Um, I actually uh, I just uh wanted to, we uh actually all live at five-oh-seven South Boulevard, which is across the street from Lot One. Um, I had sent in kind of a large sort of comment and statement via email earlier today. If hopefully folks will read that eventually. Uh, we were, my family and several others were at the first meeting. Um, we were told, actually Ms. Nguyen insisted that there would be no rezoning thought because that was a uh major issue for all of us. Um, for several reasons. Uh, just it doesn't fit in, the size. Also the fact that it included, and this is kind of difficult and I, I'm not sure why, but the folks in the county assisted housing at five-oh-eight, five-ten, five-twelve, and five-fourteen, none of them have been informed or included in any of the meetings so far at all. And I know this because I've gone over there, talked to them and continually given them the paperwork. So if this build is going to continue, for sure, we'd like to keep it at R4 so that it would flow with the rest of the community. It would give yard space. It would cause much less of a parking issue as well as a traffic issue because traffic here is actually horrible. People pass each other in the right lane regularly. Um, and to be honest, uh, I also one hundred percent support the skate park and I know that the lot is a proposed space for the skate park. So considering that's also part of it, it kind of seems like those contradict one another and maybe we should kind of wait and talk various things out. Uh, my husband and I also run Waukegan BMX track in Waukegan. We would be thrilled to help with the skate park. Uh, most skate parks are multi-use with BMX bikes, skateboards, and scooters. We have tons of very, very excellent people who have built our own track as well as others. I would be thrilled to help.
Thank, thank you, Maria. We, we have um set aside, because we have over fifty, fifty speakers tonight, just a minute per speaker. Um, and so um, I appreciate, appreciate, I, I'm sorry that we have to limit everybody's comments to, to a minute tonight because I know there's lots of different issues. Um, but we appreciate your, your comments there. And Erica, let's keep track of all these people that have some expertise and uh, um, you know, in skate parks and every, everything else, including, including the Knowles. Okay, um, all right, next up, we've got um Danny, it looks like Danny Frank Seager. Do we have a Danny Frank Seager here? After that, I've got, all right, after that, I've got uh Danny, D A N I, uh, Ferestine? Do we have?
Yep, hi.
All right, Dan, welcome.
Dan Pedersen, five-thirteen Chicago, southeast corner of Chicago Avenue and South Boulevard. Like to start to say that I'm in full support of low-income to moderate-income housing. That's not the issue in parking Lot One. Like y'all to imagine your blocks where you live and where you have neighbors that you care about. And uh, I assume you all live in single-family type areas. And uh, then there's a vacant lot where there's a proposal for an R5 development um when everybody else is R4 at thirty-five feet. So R5 is at fifty feet, that's a forty-three percent height increase over your home. Then if you imagine, R6 on your block, where it has a thirty-five foot limit, R6 is um eighty-five feet, that's what he else in your block. So it would be great. You have an acre to work with here. You can put in maybe twelve to sixteen R4 townhomes. Um, the city's considered donating the land. If the city indeed is considering donating the land, there would be a line of developers saying, yes, we'll put in townhomes, low-income to moderate-income housing. Um, and we'll be able to do it within our four parameters. There's some misinformation in your packet. First of all, it says the survey is attached. The survey is not attached, so we can plan, look, survey. But it says the properties to the west of the parking lot are commercial development. It's not the case. Immediately to the west of the Cook County Townhomes is the Cavalry Cemetery Warehouse. Immediately west of the Cavalry Cemetery Warehouse is my live workspace. To my south, Edna Porter is, she's a single-family resident. And to the south of that is five-oh-five Chicago, and there's an apartment uh on the second floor of that building. So why staff is calling that commercial development is a little bit surprising. So it's just inaccurate.
Um, Dan, we, we do only have a minute for everybody at public comment tonight and we, we've gone over that, so um, is there any major point you haven't made that you just wanted to?
Major point is Evanston can build a fabulous development there, which could be a, a beacon of great low to moderate income housing within the confines of our four zoning.
Great. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight. Um, next up, we've got Calvin Lynn, then Matt Mitchell, then Daniel uh Dupuy. We have Calvin Lynn with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Welcome, Calvin.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. Um, I'm the uh homeowner that resides at four-twenty-four South Boulevard, uh, adjacent to the city parking lot and I've been here since uh ninety-five. And when I moved here, it was undeveloped and uh, I did a lot of improvements to the property here and it, it took off and the rest of the neighborhood kind of took off after that. But my concerns is that Evanston has a model that they say that, you know, we're supposed to have a community of uh residents that has, you know, low to duplex style hu- uh homes, not uh sit, you know, in the middle of apartment buildings like, I used to say, like, I don't see R4 going to R5 or R6 in the middle of R4 with the housing's uh architectural designs that it is now. People need to have affordable homes. I, I approve of this. I think we should have affordable housing as well as uh ownership instead of, 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 you know, a mass building project that would be, you know, totally blocking out the green space, blocking out my uh property and just kind of, you know, uh stuck in the middle. I think it'd be a nice development for, I agree with Dan, uh, you know, uh, ten to twelve townhomes uh with green space. In that way, people have a stake in the community by ownership and, and we can have a community of people that, of neighbors that are enjoy each other's company and not, you know, apartment buildings where people come from all distant uh places and walks and don't have a stake in the community. That's what I have in, you know, that's my opinion.
Got it. Thank, thank you for, for coming tonight and sharing that. Uh, we got Matt Mitchell next, then Daniel Dupuy, then um, I couldn't catch the last name on the sign-in, uh, Demos Themes. I'll spell that when we get to it. Matt Mitchell, we got, do we have Matt Mitchell with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
My name's Matthew Mitchell and I commend the city of Evanston for looking into opportunities for a skate park. I am a Ridgeville Park District Commissioner and we've been having a community conversation about skate parks since last, beginning of last summer. Uh, in the late spring, early summer, a number of young people in the community started using uh a kind of unused basketball court at Ridgeville and they kind of set up an impromptu skate area with their own obstacles and ramps. Uh, and it quickly became heavily used by a lot of different members of the community. Uh, the group who called themselves Ridgeville Ramps uh ended up having formal conversations with the park district and the district allowed that impromptu skate area to stay up through the fall. And these conversations sparked an interest in a more sustainable, long-term skate area in Ridgeville and that conversation has remained ongoing. Uh, so I, I don't speak for the park district or, or the board, uh, but I am the liaison between the board and the skateboard community and I think Ridgeville has an appetite to, to make a skate area happen. Uh, and it seems like this could be a great opportunity for the Ridgeville Park District and the city of Evanston to work together on a project for the community. And I would love to be a part of that conversation and we've taken the first steps towards uh setting that up with the city manager's office. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you, Matt. And Erica, I know you're ta- taking note of that. I think there'd be some interest in if, you know, if the council wanted two skate parks, if Ridgeville did one and the city did the other or something along those lines or using uh Ridgeville parks, uh, if that makes more sense. So thanks, Matt. Uh, how about Daniel Dupuy? Do we have Daniel? And again, I apologize if I'm just butchering people's names. D U P U I S, is the last name? And then the next speaker is uh I'm gonna spell it. D E M O S T H E M S. And I didn't catch the last name on this sign up here. It was cut off.
Can you hear me? I'm not quite sure I'm on. I'm Demostanese, but Demo is a lot easier.
Uh, Demo, that is a lot easier. Welcome, welcome. Welcome. You're, you're up. You've got a minute.
Okay, I'll try to be quick. I really have some questions. Um, one is with the proposed plan, uh, how many occupants will be uh?
Has there been any?
Yeah, do we know the, the maximum number of occupants for the property for the subsidized housing?
So
The proposed item.
Yeah, o- o- on the vacant lot, you mean, in southeast Evanston? Yeah, so right, right now, I don't know if we do. When we get to that item on the agenda, um, we will go over what we do know if you want to stay tuned to that, to that part. Um, but I don't think we do now. I think the RFP process would help figure out how many units you'd be looking at.
Okay, and I, I, I don't want to run out of my minutes, so.
I, I, I pause your, I pause your minutes, Demo.
We're really concerned. We're very concerned with the impact. When you're talking about not only the density, but also the impact, uh, since there are three bedrooms, uh, units, uh, uh, what impact will that have on Lincoln School and Nichols School, which are currently really at their capacity? Uh, and the other thing is I'm, I'm aware that between South Boulevard, just on Henman Avenue alone, um, and I wonder if uh, if the city can provide me with the information or I'm sure you don't have it on hand, but how many subsidized housing units are there on Henman Avenue alone between South Boulevard and Main Street? I know there are at least two uh section eight buildings and I understand and I've heard that there are other, you know, in the larger buildings that there are, you know, subsidized housing. So if, if we can get that information, I would really appreciate it.
Okay, so your al- your alderman's on here as well. The alderman, Wayne, is the third word alderman. So she's, she's capturing this as well and we'll try and get you that.
I appreciate that.
All right. So we're, we're past, we're past our time and I need to move on, but it, was there anything really important you didn't get?
One of the other things that, will we be able to see the RFP, if an RFP prior to its distribution?
So that is something the council could bring up tonight if they wanted to say to the city manager, we want to see it uh and approve it before it's put out.
And I think, and I think uh, uh, as residents of the, you know, the area, we, I think we would like to see specifically the wording on the RFP.
Got it. All right. Thank, 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 thank you. Uh, next up, we've got Brian Knowles. So we heard from Maria earlier. We've got Brian now, then Tom Wheeler and then Melissa Alpitt.
Sure. Hey, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think just wanted to support the idea of a skate park. Uh, my only request would be to maximize the scope of the recreational opportunities to make sure to include things like BMX and, and scooter uh, and a skateboard. Um, also just uh, just in opposition of rezoning the Lot One from R4 to R6. I think particularly a little bit of concern because I think when the discussion first came up, we were told that, no, it was going to say R4. And now, a couple of ways, years later, it, you know, now we're deciding i- is it going to be R6? So uh, just trying to make sure I understand the level of transparency that, that's going on and, and definitely opposed to it. And it's a spot that could also be leveraged for recreational opportunities, green space. We're talking about skate parks. Um, so. I'll yield back for a second.
Great. Tha- tha- thank you. You nailed that. Right on. One, one minute. Perfect. Uh, next up, we've got um Tom Wheeler, then Melissa Appelt, and then Nate Kipnis. Do we have Tom Wheeler with us?
I believe Mr. Wheeler is muted on his end.
We can hear somebody breathing if you, if you're, if that's a Wheeler. Maybe that was just loose though. All right.
I believe Mr. Wheeler is double muted.
All right, so we can't hear you if you're speaking. So if you want to try to unmute again, Mr. Wheeler? All right, so I'm gonna move on. If we get the Wheeler's back, uh, we'll do that. Let's go to uh Melissa Appelt. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say that I support the skate park.
but I'm not here to talk about that. I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of Interfaith Action of Evanston Board of Directors. Uh, I read with interest Joanne and Ivan's report on affordable housing and homelessness in 2020 and I am in awe of all that was done to safeguard the lives of the most vulnerable people among us. Kudos to all involved. But can I, I want to highlight an important sentence or two embedded in this report and I quote, "Planning for a permanent twenty-four seven shelter is a high need. Acquiring a permanent site would reduce occupancy costs and significant funding for ongoing operating costs for a twenty-seven year round shelter will be needed from multiple sources." The Board of Interfaith Action urges the city council and staff to work with us with connections for the homeless, family promise and other local organizations to launch a long-term effort for a facility that can serve individuals and families seeking shelter and ultimately permanent housing. We can do this. We can do this, but we need to start now and collectively to be ready for the future. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Melissa. Uh, next up, we've got Nate Kipnis, then Ian Finley, then Christopher Bryant.
Hi, I'm Nate Kipnis. I'm an architect here in town. Um, I just moved back to fourteen sixteen Hinman, so Melissa, I'm in your, in your zone there. And I've been skateboarding for forty-six years. I was a semi-pro rider back when Tom Thumb was around, uh, from nineteen seventy-six to seventy-nine and I still skateboard in pools. So whoever said forty was the big number, uh, I'm homing in on sixty. Um, and there, that's a thing. There's a whole bunch of us that are over fifty that ride. There's a whole bunch of Facebook pages. Uh, it's, it's a great group. And I will tell you, when the skate parks are put together, not like when I was riding and we were scrambling from the police, uh, there is like no graffiti. People take care of all this. It is a really great, uh, group. And I will also say this, that I don't think I would be an architect at the level I'm at if I was not a skateboarder. And I mean that, that the community and the way that it takes kids and helps them grow, I, I think it's amazing. So as regards to the park, I think there is a huge uh, background of great skateboarding in Evanston. We were, I'm gonna be not modest about it. We were the best skateboard team in the Midwest. We have a quite a reputation in Evanston. I think you should go epic on this park and it should not be some temporary little toy thing. This should be a real park that will draw people and I'm sure I misread this. I'm sure it's a competitive bid. I saw one person on there. I know there's some really great, um, firms that do skateboarding, skate parks. And if you need someone, uh, let me know. That's always been a, uh, desire of mine, as well as affordable housing. We've done a lot of that. So just keep me posted on everything going on around here.
Thank you, Nate. Consider your name on the list that, uh, City Manager Story is keeping. All right, um, next up, we've got Ian Finley, Ian's here, and then Christopher Bryant, uh, then Sarah Vander Wicken.
Hi, there's actually two of us here, but I'm gonna be speaking. I'm Judah Bernstein and I'm Ian.
All right. Hey, guys, welcome.
So I think that a skate park would actually hold like many benefits, not only is like giving us a place like safely and legally practice our sport, but it's also like a home base where we can go to, like we know we won't get kicked out. We won't get into trouble there. We can just skate. So, so that's good. And then also, I, I think it's a bit of like an equity concern because many of like the cities bordering us have skate parks and we don't get the benefits from those parks that people living in there do. And a lot of us don't have cars or like licenses. So, yeah. And then, you know, let me just look at my points here. I think that a big part of the skate, we're like a big part of the skateboarding community in Evanston. We have a pretty diverse group and I feel like it would be a good place for a community and, you know, support each other there. So that would be good. And then I, last, last point, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. Um, last point is that I think not having a skate park wouldn't align really with the values that Evanston holds. Being like welcoming and having like community and stuff like that because like we, we get treated, we get belittled, I guess, when we're out skating. We get treated like, not like we're doing a sport. We get treated like we're, we're causing trouble and it's something that we all care about and we hold like deeply. And when someone just tells us that we shouldn't be doing that or that like all we're doing is trying to cause trouble, it's kind of hurtful and I feel like giving us a skate park would be a good place for our communities to go and feel like we belong, I guess.
Great. Got, got it, got it. Thank you, Judah. Thank, thank you, Ian. Um, it's clearly a skateboarding community here. We're seeing, we're seeing it tonight if you didn't, if you didn't realize. Um, all right, next up, uh, I saw Tom Wheeler join us. I'm gonna go back to, to Thomas, uh, if you're on and you want to, uh, take your one minute now. Uh, you're muted. Uh, Lou, can you unmute Tom?
Can you, can you mute at this point?
We can hear you. Well, welcome.
Fabulous. Sorry about the technical difficulties.
Don't worry, that happens.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I'd like to second the, the comments made by Maria earlier with respect to both the park across the street. I'm a, a resident of South Boulevard and a neighbor right next to her and Demo. I'd also like to second her comments with regard to in involving or lack of involvement from the people who are in the, the homes, uh, uh, that the cook, that the cook county homes across the street. Um, I am requesting a suitable delay in the approval for the eight R twenty-one, um, authorization. Um, I'm thinking that this should allow for more clear input from the community. I support the redevelopment of Lot One as mixed income residential property and I think most of the people who are my neighbors also do. But I feel that the process by which we have arrived at this point has been, first of all, confusing to the local community, has not kept the local community fully informed and in a timely fashion. Though I do recognize that twenty twenty has been a highly unusual year for the city and, um, I fully expected some, some bumps in the communication system. Uh, it does not appear from what I see in the document to incorporate the input I've observed between the city, our alderman and the local community. So those are concerns I've got. The stronger public access cited in the background for this council action has been very confusing. The May nineteenth meeting at the city hall, um, was extremely poorly facilitated and resulted in a random exchange of ideas, plans, concepts, in particular based on the zoning agenda item and the drawings that we reviewed and voted upon, which were, um, architectural drawings for us to make uh, comment on. Many people became concerned about rezoning. So as a result, it was agreed by the city members present at that meeting that there should be a follow-up meeting to expressly discuss zoning and its implications, to manage that meeting later. In the Zoom call and later between the alderman and the courts of Evanston, we were told that the RFP process was some time off and, and it probably was, but that we would be informed of the intended scope for the RFPs. That never happened. So, uh, a concerned group in the community suggested that they would be interested in FOIA to access documentation. We were told that that would be not, not necessary and that relevant documents would be forthcoming. To date, so far as I'm aware, no documents has been received by our group. I feel that a more engaged alderman would have given clearly actively interested community a heads up related to the likelihood of this special meeting. This did not happen. I would like to know what elements of the feedback from the local community are being incorporated in the current RFPs. And here again, I would like to second Demo that we should, uh, be able to see these RFPs before they are issued. We simply must keep any new development in keeping with all aspects of the context of this existing space.
Tom, we're, 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 unfortunately, we only have the one minute tonight and we're way, way past one, one minute.
That's fine.
But, um, so, so just for people that are speaking on that or even the skateboard one, if you ask questions, you say, hey, I'd really want, like you to consider, you know, point A, B, and C. Generally, when the council goes into discussion, when we get to that item, hopefully you'll hear a discussion about some of the points that you're raising in public comment. Doesn't always happen, but, but oftentimes it does. So, uh, oh, thank you. So thank you. Uh, let's see, um, we still have a lot more people we're trying to get through. So please, everybody, if we can keep to one minute here. Uh, Brian, Christopher Bryant. We have Christopher Bryant with us?
Hey there.
Welcome.
Uh, so yeah, my name is Christopher Bryant. Or usually I go by Avery. I've been skateboarding in Evanston for a little over seven years now. Um, so obviously I'm in favor of the skate park and what I'll have to say is that the skate community, especially in Evanston, is extremely diverse in terms of age. We have a few twenty-year-olds who skate with kids in sixth, seventh grade. We have people who are black, white, Hispanic. We have kids with various like sexual identities. We have females, we have males. We have a few kids who are gay and bisexual. And it's a community that also has a lot of focus on bettering yourself and pushing each other to better yourself, themselves. But I think a lot of parents, when they see a group of skateboarders downtown running from the police and hiding in corners, it gives us this delinquent image. And so then I feel like a lot of parents are hesitant to let their kids go out and skateboard and they're gonna push them towards playing soccer. Not that there's nothing wrong, not that there's anything wrong with that. But it kind of blocks off or makes it hard to access this community that I and a lot of people feel is so fantastic. So giving us a skate park or allowing us to help build a skate park and fund that will give us a place to display the goodness community and hopefully allow us to open our arms a little bit more and help us grow.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Or Avery. Uh, next up, we've got Sander, uh, Sarah Vander Wicken, then Corey McCray, then Eric Pitt. Do you have Sarah with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Welcome.
That's a, that's a hard, uh, let me start my video. That's a hard act to follow. Um, hi, I'm Sarah Vander Wicken. I live in the first ward. Uh, many of us are disappointed that the Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee has been in hibernation for the last ten months, but the city still needs to have an overall plan with timelines and accountability in order for there to be anything approaching enough for affordable housing in Evanston sometime in the foreseeable future. Meanwhile, uh, until a plan is developed, aldermen need to consider, uh, how they might further the development of affordable housing, particularly for families in the city. I have two ideas that might help. The first is that every alderman should take the fabulous course Affordable Housing one oh one that Joining Forces for Affordable Housing is offering to the public and then recommend it to their constituents. The second is to include in the portfolio of each alderman an expectation or even requirement that they take steps to consider where and how at least twenty-five units of affordable family housing might be developed in their ward in the next two or three years. It would be great if they got a committee of constituents to help them in this, looking at open or underused parcels, possibilities for accessory dwellings and approaching developers with ideas. It should not be left to a very overworked city staff to be entirely responsible for moving ahead to meet the city's important goals for more affordable housing and more equity in the city. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Sarah. Uh, Corey McCray, we've got next, and then Eric Pitt, and then Adam Icorn.
Hello all, this is Officer Corey McCray. Good evening.
Welcome, Officer.
Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of the skate park in favor of and also speak on behalf of some of the skaters that I've been speaking with downtown. Um, if you hear some of the skaters say they've been speaking with a police officer, more than likely that's me. Um, I took it upon myself from the unit with this, the problem solving team to help educate the skaters as to where they can and where they cannot skate within city limits. I also took it upon myself to just ask them to send me an email with their ideas of where a skate park should be and it seems that the city has already captured that because of the, uh, the information that I got from City Manager Story, that the city's already has a, a finger on the pulse of where a skate park is needed. Um, and I also just wanted to let you know that every skater I spoke with voiced their displeasure with not being able to skate. They, they did make it clear that Fountain Square is a very desirable location because it's central to the ci- it's central in the city. That's where they're able to gather. That's where they're able to, uh, practice and just talk and hang out. I did let them know that however, that the, um, the residents are not in favor of that because they seem to be destroying, uh, they think they're destroying the location. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you, Officer McCray. Uh, and thank you for all the, all the good work you do out there in the community. Uh, Eric Pitt, we've got next, and then Adam Icorn, and then Kathleen Brenner. Welcome, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thanks for, the city for putting this together. I'm an Evanston resident, uh, second ward for the past fourteen years. I moved here shortly after the Robert Crown Skate Park closed and was dismantled. So I've been working with my friends, trying to get a skate park in Evanston and we've never really gotten any momentum. Uh, Ridgeville's been very exciting the past few months and it's getting some traction. That was great to see. And so I'm very excited and want to be as involved as possible in this moving forward. Um, I have a few concerns about this memorandum that was sent out today, I think to the city council. Um, this is not probably the forum or time to really go through it. So, um, put me on the list. I offer my expertise in marketing and communications, my blood, sweat and tears into this project. Uh, I'm not going anywhere. I'm gonna be an Evanston resident for a while. You're stuck with me. So please let me help you make something.
All right. Thank, thank, thank you, Eric. Uh, consider yourself on the list. Uh, City Manager Story, let's make sure, uh, we've got Eric Pitt on that list. Um, next up, Adam Icorn, then Kathleen Brenner, then Ray Friedman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I've been a skateboarder for almost as long as Nate Kipnis. Um, and although I'm not, uh, Evanston resident, I am, um, very familiar with the, uh, skateboard community in the area. Um, I actually frequent Evanston and, um, enjoy, uh, shopping and, and golfing at Canal Shores. Um, I do understand the need for a skate park. I'm active with the Ridgeville community. And, um, I, I, I help advocate for skate parks. I've been doing that for many years. Um, a couple of years ago, I became a, I be, turned it into a career. I work for Spawn Ranch Skate Parks. I'm a development associate. I do design development for Spawn Ranch. And, uh, I would like an opportunity to submit a proposal for this, uh, skate park as, uh, as the process moves forward. So I'm hoping that there's an opportunity for me. Um, I know lots of the skateboarders in the community. Uh, we've built some very high-quality skate parks, Deerfield being the newest. If you haven't had a chance to go check out Juette Park, Deerfield Park, that's our park. We've designed and built it. So, uh, I'd like to an opportunity to put the proposal together and, uh, help you uh, fulfill the need for a skate park in the Evanston community. Thank you.
Great. Thank, thank you, Adam. Uh, next up, Kathleen, uh, Brenner, then Ray Friedman, then Bonnie Wilson.
Hi, um, I'm Kathleen Brenner and, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm one of the oldest skaters. I'm sixty-two, going on sixty-three. Um, I'm also an educator, been in teaching for over forty years. Um, I've also, uh, seen through the years that the, uh, skateboard community is, is a very diverse group of people, uh, ages and, you know, I know other people have talked about that, so I won't get into that. Um, I've also been part of, uh, planning the, uh, Northbrook Skate Park and the Deerfield Park, uh, as well. Um, whoops, sorry, my twin sister's calling me. Okay. So, uh, I was on the design team to do that because, you know, I'm old and I have, uh, I was at the first Midwest Skate Park that I, I grew up on a farm rural area in Springfield and the first Midwest Skate Park, if you don't know, was, and it was concrete, was, uh, in, um, it's called Country Surfing and it was in Springfield, near the fairgrounds. So it's no longer there, but anyway, one more, one more point I wanted to make is that, um, let's do concrete over modules. Uh, it, uh, it takes a little maintenance, but it lasts longer and it's a great way to, um, you know, that's the way to go. So I'd be, I'd be down to be part of the group too. I know I don't live in Evanston, but I have had, uh, experience in this.
It sounds like you, it sounds like you have a lot of experience. So I'm asking the city manager, put your name, put your name on that list too, Kathleen Brenner. Thank, thank, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, next up, we've got Ray Freeman. Ray, welcome. Then we got Bonnie Wilson, then Dory Stein. Um, just a reminder, everyone, we just have one minute for everyone tonight. I know there's lots of topics people are talking about. So, uh, welcome, Ray.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Ray Friedman, second ward. Um, I'll try to keep this as short as I possibly can. I, I cut it like in half. Uh, there was four topics I wanted to talk about. First, I wanted to talk about SP four and how it, it was just, it's not my neighborhood, but it's just very. and how it, it was just, it's not my neighborhood, but it's just very confusing, uh, for me to see it doesn't see it's zoned R four. But if you're asking for RFPs, wh- is it for R four, four, five or six? So I don't know how, i- it seems it's too early to even, uh, you know, vote on an RFP when you don't know what you're doing an RFP for, uh, it seems. Uh, and I, I just was trying to follow the notes that Paul Zanmosek was, uh, very complete. Um, anyhow, the conversation, uh, two conversations in two, twenty nineteen, two in twenty twenty was not able to find any information about what the residents were looking for. So I wanted to thank Alderman Winn for delaying the process two years ago, um, so that they could have a public process that will work for everyone. Next, I wanted to say, we had a very good second ward meeting five days ago. Peter and guest speaker Erica Storley covered several topics and answered, uh, a lot of questions. Um, then two days after our ward meeting this past Saturday, three days ago, we're reading in Evanston now that there's a twenty-four unit building proposed at twenty thirty Greenwood down the street from me and showing a large architectural drawing of the building. No one we spoke to knew anything about this new proposed building. Notices, no notices that we know of were given to surrounding residents. No zoning for any residential use for that building. It's zoned I two, industrial, and no public process. Why is this? Please, tomorrow, they have a DAPR meeting for this twenty thirty building. So before it went to, to ZBA, before it goes to planning, before it goes to city council, before any residents know about this building, please cancel the DAPR meeting scheduled for tomorrow at twenty thirty Greenwood until we have the community process and proper notifications given before this proposal goes to DAPR and ZBA and city council. So I will, I will keep it, uh, keep it that short.
Thank you, thank you.
I asked you, if, if you, I know it's kind of long. I did want to, um, but I did want to have a, a short tribute to Erica Storley for the passing of her father. I haven't heard anybody speak about it. But I just wanted to say that it, before Christmas, she wasn't able to make our ward meeting. And I sent an email asking Erica, what can I do to honor the memory of your father? Can I make a contribution? Can I send flowers? She sent me back an email that says, hi, Ray, thank you for reaching out to me. So thoughtful of you. I appreciate it. It's been a rough year, but soon we are rounding the corner of twenty twenty-one and I hope to make the best twenty-one it can be. My father was a very kind man. If you'd like to pay condolences, I would appreciate you doing something kind for someone. That is what he would have wanted. That's what he would have wanted to be remembered for. Uh, he would always help anyone, anyone who asked. So I hope you're, you and your family are doing well and I want to wish Erica and her family good health and happiness. The end.
Ray, thank, y- you know, you know, we try to run these, so we, we stick with our time and at the, on the other hand, you know, there's important things like that. That was very nice and I appreciate you sharing, sharing, sharing that. And it wasn't something that, you know, was, um, shared publicly, certainly with lots of people, but, but I know the word is out there. So thank you, thank you for doing that. I think that says a lot about our city manager. Next up, uh, we've got Bonnie Wilson, then Dory Stein, then, um, Renee Payden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Bonnie Wilson. I live in the first ward. I'm on the Committee of Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. Also, as you know, as a formal township assessor and a Monzaal real estate agent for thirty-eight years in Evanston, and I've seen the struggles that the residents have in Evanston for the need of affordable housing. I have lived in the third ward for thirty-seven, forty-three years, and half of those years I lived a block away from the proposed development at five oh six South Boulevard. I feel strongly that instead of having part of the development being for mixed income, why not all the developments be for a hundred percent affordable housing or supportive living? With a bus stop in the L only a block away, this would be a perfect opportunity for a hundred percent affordable housing. Age-friendly task force presented the Sawgrass Study to the city a year ago. Their study said that more affordable housing was needed in Evanston, especially seniors who are eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Evanston stepped up to the plate. This is the perfect opportunity to have more affordable housing in Evanston by making sure that five oh six South Boulevard development is a hundred percent affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Uh, Dory Stein is next, and then Renee Payden, then Richard, uh, Dewire, O'Dwyer.
Hello, may I start?
You can. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. My name is Dorey Stein and I have lived adjacent to Lot One since nineteen eighty-six. Grew up down the block. I am a low-income disabled senior. And I am also intimately involved, uh, with a homeless coalition. And number one, I'm concerned because it, in the proposal, it cites that we, the community on May nineteenth approved all of these buildings. I specifically spoke out and said, these are all eight to ten story buildings. Why, if it's only going to be three stories, are you asking us this? And Evanston had an opportunity multiple times to have affordable housing, but instead of having scattered site housing, they let the developers opt out and give money to a private, give money to the city. Now, there is a building going on down the street at Howard and Chicago Avenue. That's really an awful place to be putting families next on Howard Street where there's a lot of gang traffic and next to the L tracks and then CJE is building, uh, senior housing. And then there's this proposal next door, uh, to me. Now, per HUD regulations, if it wasn't private money, that couldn't happen. Our five, our six buildings, HUD doesn't allow that anymore. They don't like things that look, even look remotely like Caprini Green or the Robert Taylor Homes. And also per HUD regulations, the four townhomes, people need, they don't, you can't move someone with, uh, prop, on property that's been federally funded and move them into an apartment building. You have to give them housing that's comparable to what they have. And those are the only Cook County townhomes in the whole city of Evanston that have fences and that actually have enclosed backyards and also have sheds. Because the people there, they're our neighbors. They're part of the community. They lived in the community so long that two of the people died. And then sadly, during COVID, those places were sitting vacant, three of the four units, till we had our community meeting. If Evanston's so concerned about affordable housing, how could they have let those places sit? And also, I'm con- I'm also concerned, sir, as a longtime Evanston resident, that all these programs have been cut for seniors. So it's difficult to remain in your home if the city's going to be Dixonsonian and, um, basically puts you in debtor's prison if you can't fix up your property and there's no longer a paint program, there's no longer programs to help seniors. And so I am very much opposed, and again, we were told at this meeting that it was going to be our, you know, it was going to be three-story. I, uh, want green space. People need to have a place to garden. People need to feel a part of the community and I don't want to see my neighbors in those townhomes be displaced.
Thank, thank, thank you. Uh, next up, we've got, uh, Renee Payden, then Richard O'Dwyer, then Susan, uh, Docstater. Welcome, Renee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna read my little thing and try to hurry up. Um, black landlords are constantly targeted for code violations. How many white landlords get this treatment? What about the white woman on Jackson who kicked out all the people who needed affordable housing and boarded up her property to make a killing on gentrification? From Realtor.com, about nineteen thirty-two Jackson, I saw this today. It says, boarding up houses on the block slated for demolition and new construction only one block over from gorgeous Wesley Avenue. Hurry, so you're the owner when it's worth six hundred thousand dollars. This is for nineteen thirty-two Jackson. So this doesn't sound like Evanston is trying to keep affordable housing, but pretend to keep affordable housing while discriminating against black landlords with code violations and no assistance and allowing white landlords to freely board up properties with no consequences, no code violations, but profits. Okay, that was the one thing. I did want to say that I support, uh, Ridgeville and working on the skate park project because that was my first job and I loved Ridgeville.
Thanks, thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Do we have Richard O'Dwyer with us and then Susan Docstater and then Tricia Conley? Richard, are you with us? If so, we can't hear you if you're speaking. All right, I'm gonna assume Richard's.
Hello?
Hello? Oh, Richard, there, there you are, Richard. Welcome.
Okay, I was pushing my, uh, unmute button. Okay, so my video, my video is, um, is, is not going. Um, anyway, I, I live very close to Lot One and I, along with my neighbors, are very concerned about, um, oh, there I am. Okay, and I'm very cons- we're very concerned about the height of the project. Um, another thing with, we, we support, uh, affordable housing certainly. Um, as a Realtor, I'm, I'm always, you know, I, I, I do a, a wide variety of, of price points for people. And there actually is a lot of affordable housing in Evanston, um, in terms of price points. Um, I know that one of the things that, um, Alderman Winn has talked about is having units that are large enough, that are family size that are affordable. Now, that's probably a bigger challenge to have something large enough for a family. Um, but as, as a local area person to Lot One, I would like to see if we could work on having affordable housing and homeownership because homeownership is key. Um, I know we have a three flat. We've been here seventeen years and I gotta tell you, it's a fantastic way to have both. We're building equity as the building owners, but we also live here. We take care of our tenants. And our tenants have affordable rent and their rent therefore makes it affordable for us. I don't think I could live east of Chicago Avenue without being in a three flat because single-family house is very expensive. Um, and so I would encourage people that as we look at this, let's really look at the affordability of, you know, it's okay for people to rent, but it's also good for people to own. I don't know if we want some big government-run entity right there. I think it's better if we can break it down. And, uh, also, if taxes are affordable, it really makes the affordability part of the phrase affordable housing important, you know? If we can, you know, do all the things that Evanston's been doing in terms of trying to generate tax income, um, from good jobs and, and good business districts and, um, hopefully we'll be back on track with that soon. Thanks for your time, everyone.
Thank, thank you, Richard. Uh, we have Susan, uh, Docstater, then Tricia Conley, then Brenda Greer.
Hello, Mayor Hagerty. You got my name exactly right. I really appreciate that.
I'm about one for forty tonight then. Good. Welcome, Susan.
I'd like to speak in support of the skate park. Um, because at this time, there are lots of soccer fields, there are lots of basketball courts. Um, but there really aren't any skate parks of any reasonable side in the city, of any reasonable size in the city of Evanston. Um, we live in the ninth ward very close to Ridgeville Park. And so when the pop-up skateboard park happened, it was just a thrill for my incipient skateboarding twelve-year-old. Um, the, uh, but now because that's gone, um, when the ground is clear, I'm being begged to drive to Willmet or drive to, to, uh, Chicago. And that makes me concerned for the kids who want to skateboard, but who don't have access to public transport, who, who only have access to public transportation or they're too young or their parents are unavailable to, to get them places. Um, I think it's a good low-cost way to have physical activity for kids and to socialize. Um, pretty comparable in cost to basketball or soccer. And I know how much use, for example, the, the portable soccer field got when it was up at Robert Crown. So I would be in support of both the temporary installation as well as in support of in establishing a more permanent installation so that Evanston children and teens and adults who enjoy skating and, and scootering and BMX biking have access to the sim- to similar facilities to what our neighbors have.
Great. Thank, thank you. Next up, we've got Tricia Conley, Brenda Greer, then Tina Payden. And again, we're asking people to try and keep your comments to one minute. Tricia Conley?
Tricia Conley, fourth ward. Um, I'm here tonight to speak to SP four. And, um, I want to start by just acknowledging, I do appreciate what I saw in the packet that there is an interest of two and three-bedroom larger units. I know this is something many community members have been pushing for and asking about because we do have community that is in need of those type of units. Um, I do want to push us as a community to really think about what we can do besides the same old tra- trajectory. And that is, I want us to think about, we own land. And this proposal is talking about either gifting that land or selling that land. Land is valuable here. We all know that. This is the argument I always get from, uh, representatives that say, well, we can't build affordable housing here because of land value. Well, we have valuable land and we should hold on to it in regard to affordable housing and the longevity of having affordable housing. Why would we give that away to a potential of only thirty years for affordability? When we could have it forever and know that it's there and we can dictate what happens in that housing and how it is to help our community members most in need. I also heard tonight, um, that people haven't felt that they've had voice in this. And I know this has been ongoing, but this is really disturbing, especially for people who are of the most marginalized that maybe not intentionally, but have been dismissed or not at the table. And in any future program, whether it's for-profit or non-for-profit or whatever the case may be, we must have citizen voice and ideas and comments and sharing in these conversations early, not later, not when it's in the pipeline. So I think we should really think about and proceed with ideas around community trust and a bigger future about what Evanston means when they say they care about affordable housing over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we've got, uh, Brenda Greer, Tina Payden, then Jana, then Nusma. Ms. Greer? Do we have Brenda Greer with us? If you're speaking, Ms. Greer, we can't hear you. All right, I'm gonna move on to the next one and I'll come back to Ms. Greer if she joins us. Uh, do we have Tina Payden?
Yes, we do.
All right, welcome, Tina.
Okay, um, quickly. So, uh, as I always say, there's no grants for small minority landlords providing affordable units for windows, roofs, or tax breaks or anything. But I find it odd that you have money to build a skate park, which I am in favor of. But we've been talking about affordable housing for many, many years. Nothing is happening on Chicago Avenue where the man was supposed to build, uh, some affordable units and you all give him two million dollars, not understanding that. The same people seem to get help, such as the property at Church and Barrow, where, which you will be hearing tonight. Mr. Koenig from Housing Opportunity just got one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, I believe is the amount, for an ADU at nineteen thirty Jackson, and now he seems to be the developer. And now he seems to be the developer for this property on Church and Darrow. Also, Jackson and Wesley still looks like the ghetto. Nowhere else in Evanston has so many boarded up buildings in their ward, which I believe is six or seven houses that used to be affordable. Nowhere else. Tell me where else in Evanston has this many boarded up units. Affordable housing is not included in every ward, such as the high school homes. I've all been placed in the fifth ward. What happened to the rest of the wards? I don't see anything happening with affordable housing in those wards, anywhere else besides five. Also, trying to use CDBG money for extra inspectors to inspect for low-income housing is discriminatory practice and needs to be voted on when it comes up to vote. Need money for landlords instead of harassing us with more code violations. Also, you should vote down big buildings that are only providing studios and one-bedroom units. How many developers have added two, three, or four-bedroom units for families? This is discriminatory against low-income residents and residents with families. It looks like you're trying to push out affordable housing in Evanston for families instead of making more units.
Tina, yeah, I need you to wrap up.
Well, you let a whole bunch of people speak a long time.
And Tina, I've given you a lot more time than a minute too. So let's not be riding me that I somehow cut you off at a minute and I haven't cut other people off.
I just have two more things to say. I want to know, which I've been asking for a long time, how many units have been lost for families here in Evanston for affordable housing? And also, I'm still waiting and the residents are still waiting for zoning to be put back for five R-5A instead of R5 in West Evanston, which is three and a half stories. I would beg that you will vote down any building that does not have R5A and it should be put back on the table. Thank you, Black Lives Matter.
Thank you, Tina. All right, next up, Jonathan Nusma, Annie Coakley, then Priscilla Giles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I just like to offer a few brief remarks on item SP four concerning Lot One. On the positive side, I like that this proposal includes some consideration for multi-bedroom units and also being in such close proximity to public transportation. On the other side of the balance, I am concerned that a permanent sale or donation of a public asset for only a temporary public benefit is not something that, not a direction we should be proceeding. So as this process unfolds, I'd just like to encourage the city to drive a hard bargain, not only with this developer, but, or whatever developer might come out of this process, but developers in, doing business in Evanston in general. And certainly last but not least, to make sure that the neighbors of any particular proposal have a strong voice in the process.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Mayor, this is Brenda Greer.
All right, Mrs. Greer, welcome. Everybody's got one minute tonight, so.
Okay, you have to forgive me. I have a problem. I get used to one way of getting in and then we change to something else. But I'm calling. I lived in the fifth ward and I grew up in the fifth ward, about five blocks from my fifth ward alderman now. And it was family-owned property. But I'm calling regarding tonight, a family member who's been unemployed and been homeless since the summer, but he lost two jobs due to COVID and now he has a third job. He's homeless and we can't allow him, because we have older people in the family, to stay in any of our homes of our seniors due to his working and being around a number of people. He's around quite a few. So he's with Connection, a client, and I'm helping him try to locate an apartment. And I had thought we had him placed and he had thought so also, and I think it's caseworker. And then we found out, well, he couldn't rent the unit. So he has to locate an apartment. He was very disappointed. I was too, because we thought we had him placed due to the winter and all. He can't stay with his mother because she's a nurse. He don't want a chance COVID and living with her. So he's in a catch-22. And he has family here in Evanston that's taxpayers. And I don't understand why Connection hasn't gotten him placed. There seems to be a long waitlist and the black males aren't being placed for some reason as quickly or they're sent outside the community. And they're people that care about the community and the people within the community. So we need them in the community, family members, that they help us a lot. So I'm hoping that he will get placed. He was very disappointed and I was too, because we thought that he was going to be placed. He found the apartment, but it was too expensive. So I need to know what the incoming guidelines are, since I'm helping him and he's working. He can't take off from work. He'll lose his job as he did the other looking for apartment. So I need to know from Connection what the guidelines are for a single black male. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. And City Manager Storley, if we can just have someone follow up with Ms. Greer on that, that would be good. Thank you. Next up, we've got Annie Coakley, then Priscilla Giles, then Sue Lalabac. Do we have Annie Coakley with us? Hi, Annie, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Annie Coakley, Director of Downtown Evanston. I am speaking in support of the skate park. I'm sure that doesn't come as a surprise to you. Fountain Square has become quite the popular skating location and that is common in lots of urban areas that plazas do take on that role. I think an alternative location would be a huge benefit to downtown residents and businesses. And I wanted to add a resource to Erica's growing list, skatephilly.org. Philadelphia has a huge skate culture, which I love skate culture, especially girls' skate. But Philly Skate is a, an organization that maybe can be replicated in terms of funding. They have funded over nine skate parks in the city of Philadelphia. So it does not all lean on city resources. Thanks for your time.
Great. Thank you, Annie. Thanks for all that you do for our city downtown. Next up, we've got Priscilla Giles, then Sue Lalabac, and then I've got someone named Martin. I don't have a last name, just Martin. Are you with us, Ms. Giles? Do we have Priscilla Giles? If you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Okay.
I heard you and then it went mute again, Ms. Giles. And I see, I see your... There we go.
Evanston wants to be known as a city of diversity, yet city taxes and projects have made housing a possibility for only the wealthy. But for the low-income, underemployed, and those on fixed incomes, housing is a burden which can easily be fixed with the money set aside from housing for the wealthy. Permanent low-income housing would maintain diversity and allow long-term residents to stay in the community they helped to build. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Next up, we've got Sue Lalabac, then Martin, and Carla Sutton.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sue Lalabac. I work at Connections for the Homeless and Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. We thank the city for resuming these meetings on affordable housing and we're encouraged by the report in tonight's packet. We strongly support the South Boulevard rezoning and RFP and in fact, would like to see the RFP broadened to solicit proposals for mixed-income development that are 100% affordable. We'd also like to stress that the housing crisis existed well before the pandemic and we had hoped that an affordable housing plan would be in place by this point to address long-term needs. We're asking the city to do the following. Ask developers to propose even more creative solutions that provide the maximum number of affordable housing units possible on city-owned lots and other land. Put zoning guidance in place for decision-makers so they can use zoning more effectively and efficiently as a tool to increase equity and affordability. Ask aldermen to look for opportunities for affordability in their own wards and seek to turn those opportunities into affordable units and find innovative ways to fund really significant increases in housing. The increase in new units that we saw in 2020 is encouraging, but those 32 units fall far short of the number of units needed. We're not asking the city to move out of crisis mode in order to focus on affordable housing instead of COVID. Rather, we're asking you to recognize that the lack of long-term solutions is part of the crisis and deserves immediate attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next up, we've got Martin. Again, I don't have a last name for Martin, or maybe that is the last name. If you're speaking, we can't hear you. All right, I'm gonna move on and if Martin comes back at the end, I'll put you at the end. Do we have Carla Sutton with us? And then Michael, I can't read my writing, Michael Hoff or Huff? And then Boucher Jones? Do we have Carla Sutton with us? If you're speaking, Carla, we can't hear you. All right, how about Michael Huff? Or Hoff? Yeah, it's Michael Hoff, H-O-F-F. All right, not hearing from Michael. How about Boucher Jones? That's B-U-C-H-E and Jones is the last name? All right, Luke, I'm not hearing or seeing any of those individuals. Is there any other name that I didn't call off tonight for public comment that I should have that you're aware of?
Mayor Carter is back online if we want to move to Carter.
Okay, we missed Carter up front. So Carter, welcome. And if you could just introduce your first and last name, Carter, for us.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Carter Seesmeyer. I live in, I've been living in Evanston for most of my life and I live in the fourth ward. Oh, yeah. And I just wanted to say that I am in favor for the skate park. I have a few friends who skate around Evanston a lot and they have told me about like, how fun it is to skate around there with their friends. But they've also told me about their sort of run-ins with the police and how they have sort of been told to not skate in certain areas like the fountain someone mentioned earlier. And I feel like the skate park would be a good way to create a sort of safe and secure place where skaters could go to and not feel worried about if the police are coming and also create sort of a meetup spot that other people have mentioned earlier. So I'm in favor for the skate park, yeah.
Great. Thank you, Carter. Luke, are you showing anyone else?
I don't believe so, Mayor.
All right, I am not either. I want to thank everybody. We had a lot of people at public comment, but a lot of different topics, including the Lot One in southeast Evanston, the idea of whether we need a skate park here in Evanston and on other housing matters that we're going to talk about tonight. So thank you, everybody, for coming out, speaking to your elected representatives. We're now going to move on to the special orders of business, business tonight. I'm gonna ask Alderman Rainey, if you wouldn't mind, tonight, I'm gonna ask you to take the lead just in moving the different items as our senior alderwoman. So if you could just move for discussion, SP one. Maybe I asked Alderman Rainey and I don't see Alderman.
Somebody else right now. I'll take the second.
I'm gonna, Alderman Braithwaite, are you raising your hand willing to do that or?
Yes, I am. And if it's all right, I just want to take a very brief moment of privilege. There was a statement made during public comments regarding the project on Greenwood. And I live a block away from that project and I did not receive notification of the DAPR meeting. So Ray, thank you very much for calling it out. I had to actually search my email and the message came in January 4th and I asked the developer to give me a call just to, so that we were able to discuss it in calendar. So Erica, I'm gonna ask that we cancel the DAPR meeting and then I will connect with the developer and get him to present at a ward meeting before this moves forward in any way. So thank you very much, Mayor, for that privilege. And to the residents of the second ward, we will have a calendar, calendar for our next meeting. So item one. SP one is staff will, and this is for discussion. Staff will present information on the skate park installations and it's requesting that the City Council provide direction on the following. Number one, whether to proceed with temporary skate park installation at one of the locations proposed by staff. Number two, whether to proceed with the planning and design of the permitted skate park installation at the locations to be determined. Funding will be from the Capital Improvement Fund, 2021 General Obligation Bond. And fiscal year 2021, there was a $50,000 budget for temporary skate park installation and $60,000 budgeted for the planning and design of a permanent skate park installation. Again, this is for discussion.
For a second?
Second.
All right, so this item is open for discussion. Alderman Rainey?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I spoke earlier with Lawrence Hemonway. And I was curious about the temporary skate park. I get a little concerned about temporary facilities. And when I have attended the Ridgeville Park Zoom meetings, their efforts were going to be in the area of 20,000 or 30,000. And when I talked to Sarah Flax about working with Ridgeville to support their skate park, we were talking about that amount of money. And Nate Kipnis made a very good point. You know, let's go for the real skate park. And Lawrence said tonight, well, we really don't have the money right now. No, we don't really have the money right now. This is, this is a major public improvement. We have to bond for this money. So let's do it. I mean, I think everybody made a perfect, a perfect argument. We have to bond for this money. Nobody has $750,000 sitting around. It's something we have to bond for. Not only that, but I see this as an opportunity, especially with people with deep pockets like Nate Kipnis. We can do, we can do a mini Robert Crown fundraising event, opportunity. And I just, I would, you know, it's, we're not allowed to interfere with citizen comment, but I would love to have asked some of the supporters of the skate park, look, do you want a temporary thing or do you want to go for the real thing? Especially if we're interested in doing the real thing. And I really am. And I am all for this. I feel, I mean, I was a big supporter of Robert Crown. But this, this is more tangible for me. I understand like 750,000, 50 million was a little over my pay grade. But I knew others understood that. This is something that is really tangible and I, so that's what I support. You know, if everybody else wants a temporary one, I'll go along with that. But I just see a temporary one becoming the permanent one and I'd rather go through the whole thing.
Thank you, Alderman. So, you know, Alderman Fisk has her hand up. So I'm gonna go to Alderman Fisk, but then what I want to do is I'd like to go to our city manager just so she can give us the background from the city perspective. And now she's got the park director here as well for why, you know, temporary right now as opposed to setting up a permanent one. Alderman Fisk, though?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm gonna take a little bit of credit for this because if there was a problem, it was occurring in my ward. But I was so impressed with the conversation that was ensuing. And that's what I asked the police department to do, was to bring the skateboarders together with residents and business owners and me and other aldermen and have a other aldermen, um, and have a conversation about this. Um, because I, I really would like to hear from the skateboarders about what kind of park they want. And I am so enthusiastic about this, because I think, you know, this is really a win-win. And, you know, really what, um, the young people were actually asking for was a place to skate. They weren't trying to be disruptive, and they weren't trying to be rude, and, um, but they just had nowhere to go. And I think everyone understands that, and we need to, we need to figure this out. I'm very excited about, um, the opportunity here, especially for a multi-use park, and something, I can't remember the name of the, um, the woman who was talking about the, the design, the multi-use design. But I think this conversation that we're having here tonight is really helpful, because out of the woodwork have come all of these people and these experts, and with a lot of really great ideas. And this is what I think is the best about Evanston, is getting together and talking about what we want. Now, in the same regard, I think, um, like Robert Crown, we can also ask, um, who can help us pay for it? And I, again, like Grandmother's Park and, and Robert Crown and, and other initiatives, I think we, we should ask the community too, um, about what they can do to help us, uh, help us fund something, um, like a state-of-the-art skate park. And I don't know whether Scott Sofia is still here or not with us, but, um, I spoke with him, because he had interacted with a, a number of the, um, of the young folks, and he picked up the phone without anybody asking. He picked up the phone and called Tony Hoff, which is uh, a nationally-known skateboarder, and, and Tony designs, um, skate parks also. And so we learned a lot by people being really enthusiastic and looking for a way forward. So I'm really proud of all the work that everybody's put into this, and I'm really proud of the skateboarders coming here tonight, and now we can see how broad the community is, and that really helps us, um, again, figure out how we can get this done. Um, is, and I would like to ask them what they think about the plans for a temporary skate park. Is that something that would meet their needs? I don't know, but we, we certainly should get everybody at the table, and I'm sure that Lawrence can do that. He's good at bringing folks to the table, and, um, um, and I, I just would like everybody to get together and, and talk about it before we make a final decision on whether to go forward with a temporary skate park or not.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman. And just, so everybody that's watching and tuning in knows, again, this item tonight is for discussion. It wasn't for action, uh, but I think what the city manager and parks director wanna get out of this is understanding if there's a general consensus on the council to move for, forward, um, and, and they will then start to do more of the like work and getting some, you know, groups together and talking more about it. So with that, what I wanna do, I know Alderman Wilson has something, but I wanna go to, uh, city manager Storley, just to let her sort of set the table on this, and if she wants her parks director to say anything, and then I'm gonna go to Alderman Wilson next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, we have been talking about a skate park for what seems like a decade. Uh, we have been working internally with our staff to define what, um, what that might look like, what possibly options would be for places it could go. Um, and then, you know, really talking with the community, it started with, uh, the police department interacting with, uh, young people downtown, but there's been a, a, a community who's been needing this for a long time, so that's why we brought forward the option of, uh, the temporary one, because even though, uh, we do wanna get started this year on designing what we will ultimately build, that would be a year away from construction. Uh, so it's the temporary one would be something we could do immediately and would, uh, help fill that gap. Um, but we have a short presentation we would like to give, uh, just to give you a quick overview of, uh, what we're thinking and get some feedback, so if that's all right.
That would be great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, Lawrence Hemingway, Director of Parks and Rec, and as, um, oh, A- Ann Clerk Reed, I apologize for that. Um, I, I just kinda wanna, uh, set the, the, the discussion, uh, of, uh, of a temporary versus a permanent, and temporary is on the table because it's such an immediate need, and, uh, we want to try to provide an option for, uh, our skating community here in the short term, because we know, uh, to do it right, more permanent one takes a longer-term, uh, planning, and we wanna go through that process. So I'm gonna share my screen and present my proposal to you, or my presentation. You guys see it? Is it up?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. Let's start. So the opportunity here, as you heard from our members tonight, uh, from the public, um, you know, it's such a tremendous community here in Evanston, um, that desires to use our skating. Uh, and that just doesn't include skate parks or, or skateboarders. It includes, as we've heard, bikers, scooters, rollerbader, rollerbladers, and et cetera. Also, skateboarding is such a huge popular sport in our country and throughout the world, that it was added to the 2020 Tokyo Games, and I'm not sure if everybody knows that. And unfortunately, because of the pandemic, we didn't have the games, but those, uh, skateboarding will be a new Olympic sport. It also provides programming for our most challenging, um, population in terms of programming, which is our teens and twins. We've heard a lot of older skaters tonight, 'cause this is a sport that once people pick it up, they do it for life, so. But we really want to provide a safe and, uh, place for our young people, specifically those teens and twins, to enjoy. And also, um, Alderman Fisk, as well as, um, Officer McCray was on tonight. This has created a unique, uh, partnership now between our police as well as, um, uh, the young people who are skateboarding. So again, tonight's discussion, we wanna talk temporary versus permanent. Uh, some of the things to consider as we go through this, I'm going to lay out some potential, um, just recommended temporary spots where you consider, as well as for the permanent. Uh, but things we gotta do to, like, move fast. You have to have a site that's large, it has a flat paved surface. Um, we're trying to identify places, you know, uh, not too close to residences as possible. Um, we, uh, do not want to displace any current programming with a temporary location, as well as, you know, we wanna consider some, uh, any products that is ultimately purchased, that it can be folded into a more longer-term or permanent solution. For permanent, uh, consideration, we gotta look at, you know, all our sites throughout the, uh, city. Um, again, staying, trying to identify a place that's, um, not adjacent to residences. Uh, we do not want to displace any programming, but if we do this right, and that is the ultimate decision, this buys us time to try to relocate any displaced, uh, program. And then we also have to evaluate an in-ground versus an above-ground for a permanent location. So I'll start now with temporary. Uh, you've heard, uh, temporary, and the reason why we want to try to do this, we feel that we can move forward with relatively small investment, $30,000. And, you know, $30,000 in the scheme of a park renovation is not, you know, a lot of money when we are looking at, you know, park renovations that cost much, much, uh, significantly more. Um, we need an existing paved surface in reasonably good condition that is relatively flat for, uh, this install. Uh, we need to access, it need to be accessible by multiple modes of transportation. We wanna stay away from residents, as I said earlier. We're looking for land that is currently owned by the city. That makes it easier. We own it, we make the decision on it, and it requires, um, existing infrastructure. Uh, and then, but a temporary, one of the downfalls is, is, is a much shorter life. It could only last up to five years. Obviously, we want to move quickly on a more permanent solution. Uh, and again, it will allow, this only allows for limited public input if we're trying to move fast. Some of the temporary locations we are considering. What you have, what you see here, this is the Civic Center lot. And with Civic Center currently being, uh, closed for business, um, it has a relatively flat lot. It meets some of the, uh, needs that we just discussed in terms of immediacy and allowing us to be able to move quickly. This is the north, uh, side of the Civic Center lot. This is the area we could come in quickly and try to install something while we start moving forward with a long-term permanent solution. The Civic Center is also, uh, centrally located, and so it, it's a good option for us to consider. Next here, you have, uh, this is lot number five. Lot five is in the fifth ward also, uh, like the Civic Center. This is, uh, here, if you see my cursor, this is Green Bay, this is Ashland, and this is a city-owned lot. Uh, this lot is currently, as you can see in this, uh, aerial. It is used highly by the businesses here, uh, but, you know, with, again, a temporary strategy, we feel like this could be a potential, uh, good location. It's flat, even land. We can come in quickly, and we can continue to keep some parking for the public to use to support these businesses. Uh, but we could use this as a potential site. We heard a lot tonight about lot number one down on South Boulevard, about the potential, um, development. But again, from a short-term perspective for a temporary location, this is another ready-to-use site with relatively flat surfacing. We can come in and put the various modules in, and you can have a temporary lot while the long-term development is continuing to be, uh, planned, processed, communicated with the community. So we think lot one serves as a good option for a temporary location. Some of the potential concepts of what it could look like. This is just a, um, a conceptual drawing of a temporary install at, with approximately a $30,000, uh, budget. So you can have something that potentially looks such as this. Here's another option, very similar. Same type of, uh, look from a temporary perspective. And then, here, here is a actual install of a, of a skate park to, with our neighbors just to the south. What you see here is Lincolnwood. Uh, this is Lincolnwood Skate Park that has been re- uh, recently installed. It kinda fits the, um, the concept drawings that I just showed you. This is something, uh, that is very close to us that, um, you can go see and look at for about what we're talking about paying for a temporary spot. So, and as you see, this is in the middle of one of their parks. You see their playground here, um, and this open green space here, just, just directly to it. But this is what we're talking about potentially. Uh, the modules could look a little different, but this is what we're talking about on a temporary concept. For a more permanent installation, obviously, um, you know, our budget, we can build it as great as we like. Uh, so we're anywhere from 350,000 to more, a much larger, more $750,000-type structure. Uh, we will need to design and make sure that, uh, any support infrastructure for drainage and those things are built into the design. Uh, just like all, um, park installations or playgrounds or other things, it has a 20-year lifecycle. Uh, so it's worth the investment. It lasts much longer. Uh, we gotta identify adequate space, uh, that is currently not programmed. You heard me mention that earlier. We don't wanna displace anything, but if we do, uh, choose a location that requires displacement, this requires us a chance to relocate that as part of this process. We wanna keep it close to all modes of transportation, keep it away from residential areas as well, and then we can take our time, do it right, uh, engage with the community, um, as we heard from tonight. Some of the locations for a more permanent install considered, you know, here, we looked all over the city to come up with these. So, uh, as far north as Lovelace, uh, central, kinda Beck Park or Twigs, or maybe even Mason. Uh, further south, we looked at Channel Side and James Park. Channel Side is here. Channel Side is, uh, Skokie, uh, is maintained by Skokie in partnership with, uh, us in the city, and there's a current, um, skate park there right now that is old and not usable. So, uh, if we go to Le- Lovelace, this is an aerial of Lovelace. What you see in red are potential locations of what a permanent install or where we can go with a permanent install. Here, you see Twigs. So Twigs, this is again, is an aerial here of Twigs. Uh, here's that parking lot, lot number five, that we discussed for a temporary, and here we could go within this space here for a permanent install if we went to Twigs Park. Beck Park, uh, this is an old aerial. You now have the water pumping station here. This is actually the school before it was demolished. But you have, you know, now the pumping station, the parking lot, and you have this space here that can be considered for a permanent install here at Beck Park. Mason Park, we've been talking, um, as, as a, a city staff, and some of you are aware of Mason Park expansion. Uh, here is where Mason currently sits, and the discussion is surrounding the expansion of Mason, so let me orient you. Here are the basketball courts, the little fieldhouses here, obviously our baseball diamond. Our tennis courts at Mason are here, so we're talking adjacent to Mason. If Mason is expanded, you can, you look at this area for a more permanent solution for a, uh, permanent install of a skate park. Here is James Park. Uh, you know, James is kind of our baseball, softball capital, uh, along with soccer. Uh, we can also consider looking at James here. Uh, we're looking potentially here, right at the base of the hill. But I would like to let the council know, if we use this space, where this would, this would displace a, uh, very popular, uh, picnic area right now. So this will be a space that will require us to re- relocate, uh, a picnic area here. And just to orient you guys, this is the west lot, the fieldhouse, the playground, all of that area, obviously the Mount Trashmore here, and this is at the base and the foot just west of, uh, I'm sorry, just east of, of, of Mount Trashmore here. But again, this is a permitted picnic space, and we will have to go down that path if we choose to consider this as our permanent home. And then here is Channel Side. For those who aren't familiar, uh, Channel Side, you know, here is, uh, Sam's Club. Uh, and this is main right here. So as you come in, this Channel Side Park right here, the dog park that we share with, uh, with Skokie is right here. Currently, there is an old skate park install that currently sits right here. Um, we could potentially talk to Skokie if we want to go in this space. This kinda fits a lot of the other criteria that's listed, away from residence, um, easy access, parking, those kinds of things. But this is Channel Side, but this will require us to partner with Skokie to do so. Potential options or look of more permanent. Uh, here's a permanent, uh, concept with modules, and modules are the pieces that are brought in and built in, and, I mean, that are brought in, installed, and you put these pieces to put together the various amenities of the skate park. And so these are the type of modules that can come, where skaters can come, bikers, rollerbladers, regardless of the wheel sport. They can use these as, um, to do their various tricks. Um, so this is a kind of concept, and what potential modules would look like in a more permanent home. Another option for a permanent home is a more concrete, custom-designed skate park. And as you see, this will require, um, customized concrete to be molded and scoped and poured and allowed to cure. But this could be also the type of concept that you can have for a more permanent location. Again, we will work with our, uh, skating community to see which way, uh, what, you know, they ultimately would like to see. Other com- uh, you know, we heard a lot about what's been happening at Ridgeville. One of the other things for us to consider is to talk with and consider Ridgeville as potential locations. Uh, consider any other underli- underutilized city parking lots if we want to, um, consider those as part of either a temporary or permanent location, and any other city park that isn't listed, but we, you know, tried to list those that could accommodate this type of amenity in a much, uh, longer term. Implementation timeline, and again, these are just, you know, estimate for a temporary install. The goal will be to try to move forward with something, uh, this spring to summer. So in the next three to six months, staff will work, uh, you know, Parks and Rec staff will work closely with the design, uh, team and the city engineer on, uh, product selection, going through a procurement process. Um, I mentioned in the memo that we could go through a cooperative purchaser for this temporary install. And then obviously if we go through, uh, the, the, the permanent, uh, when we start working on a permanent solution, we would go through our entire, um, bidding process and not just go through a co-op. The co-op is just for the temporary, uh, install because it allows us to move much quicker. But we will go through our normal purchasing process. So, um, those residents tonight who have experience and design and all of that will have a chance to, um, participate in the permanent process. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen and turn the floor back over to you guys for a discussion.
All right. Thank, thank you, Lawrence. We're, I'm gonna go with, uh, Alderman, um, Wilson, then Wynn, then Sufferdin, then Rue Simmons.
I thank you. I, I think there's a lot of people that would agree with, uh, the idea that this is something that's probably long overdue. Uh, I've been having conversations with the community for a very long time about this. Uh, I am supportive of having a temporary facility while the, uh, permanent one is being, uh, uh, worked out. Uh, but I do support the permanent one as well. Uh, I think it, it sounds like it's an excellent opportunity for a partnership with Ridgeville. So if that's something that can be, uh, accomplished, I think that's a great idea. Um, we really need to get the people who are going to use the park to be the ones who are, I guess, driving the design and, and, and location. Uh, I want to make sure that it's accessible to get to. I don't want people to have to drive to it. I think, uh, you know, that would defeat one of the, uh, underlying ideas here. But, uh, I'm a hundred, 100% supportive of this. I really want to make sure that this happens. And, um, and like I said, I do support, um, a temporary one while the permanent one is, uh, designed and implemented.
That, thank you. Alderman, Wynn?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the big sister of our little brother who skateboarded all over every place we ever lived, including Pearl Harbor Navy Base, um, and was frequently brought home by the Shore Patrol, um, I am still a huge supporter of, um, skateboarding. Uh, uh, it shaped my, my younger brother in everything he did in it and has done in his adult life. So, uh, I do think I agree with Alderman Wilson. Um, we do need to do both. Uh, you know, COVID is going to continue, uh, for a while. We're not sure when we're going to have some of our other facilities, uh, available and open. Uh, the winter we're having right now is so mild. Um, and we need to have more outdoor activities available for our teens. So I, I, I do think we should do both a temporary for now, uh, as well as a permanent one. Um, I also agree that, uh, if we can work with Ridgeville, that would be great. Uh, I would advocate that it be very centrally located so that, um, kids from or adults from anywhere in Evanston have sort of equal access to it. Uh, so, uh, I would, I know that, uh, Mr. Hemingway presented a lot of different, um, locations. But I think if we can find one of those that works best for permanent in terms of access, uh, that would be, that would be my choice. And I completely agree. We have so many, uh, skateboard advocates here, uh, who are ready to jump in. They should be part of every aspect of the planning.
Great, thank, thank you, Alderwoman Wynn. Alderman Sufferdin?
Sure, um, yeah, I guess I gotta say first, I think in our current financial situation, it is crazy that we're talking about this. Just had to get that out there. I think it would be great if we could pull it off and, uh, but I just don't know how this is something that we present as a priority when we're talking about selling all of our assets, uh, to, to generate revenue. I'd like to ask, uh, Director Hemingway, did you look at any lakefront areas, anything over by Clark Tree Beach or Arrington Lagoon? Is there a reason why those weren't considered?
Um, Alderman Sufferdin, yeah, so because, um, you know, those are currently passive recreational activities or, or, or spots. Um, I, we, we stayed away from the lakefront. Uh, we were trying to just consider the, the larger parks that could accommodate space. Um, so, you know, understanding the value that how the community uses the lakefront. Um, the decision was to just, you know, we didn't, we didn't look at those parts.
Okay, um, well, it sounds like there's a lot of enthusiastic community members who would love to get something going. And I, I think we should foster that. But again, I just, I don't know how in this current economic environment that we're in, this is something that, um, we're talking about borrowing money for. Uh, and I just gotta say, um, thank you for your presentation, Lawrence.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Thank you. Um, I think everyone has said it, um, would like to know more from the skate community. If this temporary $30,000, um, bill, it satisfies the need for that type of recreation. I agree with Alderman Wynn's point on a need for more outdoor recreation is why I've asked for the, um, ice skating rink at Foster Field. Everyone look out for that, um, enjoy it. But I do share Alderman Sufferdin's concern in any, um, non-essential improvements at this time, especially when we have removed from the budget, um, allocations that we had for Beck Park improvements and expansion. So to prioritize another recreation, um, substantial bill, permanent bill before others that have been held, uh, I don't think would be fair or appropriate. But to Alderman Rainey's point about some sort of seems to be a lot of community, uh, support. I love it. A, uh, private partnership in helping, um, fund some, something like this seems to be appropriate. And if the skate community does decide that the temporary proposal, um, that you showed, uh, Director Hemingway, the example at Lincolnwood, to me, it doesn't look like $30,000 value, but I'm not a skater. So it might be like really amazing. And if the skate community appreciates something like that as temporary, it seems that we've set aside dollars for skate park exploration and we can move forward. If we do decide on temporary, um, the one parking lot that you proposed that is at the far east end of Twigs Park, I would ask that you remove that from consideration. Um, I live in the immediate neighborhood and I intentionally have driven past there, um, different days and times. And the parking lot is, um, utilized by the businesses in that area that are largely essential businesses providing various services to homes and, um, businesses in the community. So I think we start with some, um, additional community engagement from the skating community and see if there is an interest, um, from a private philanthropic partner. If there's any, um, path forward for a permanent installation.
Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I'm, I support, oh, sorry. Um, so I totally support a skate park. I just want to bring up one quick thing before my skate comments, which is we are now into the eight o'clock hour of a meeting that was supposed to be potentially over at eight. It was supposed to be focused on affordable housing, which we haven't done in a very long time. So while I appreciate the skaters, I'm a little bit frustrated that we have added this onto a very important meeting for, of affordable housing. Um, that said, I hope that we, and I know, um, I spoke to, um, Manager Storley about this already. Ridgeville, as Juan mentioned and Matt Mitchell mentioned, has been talking about this for about a year. Um, lots of community members, you know, I assume from the area of South, South Evanston, but also maybe all over Evanston, spent some time putting together this, you know, makeshift skate park that they talked about. So hopefully we can, you know, have a real serious conversation about Ridgeville and what their plans are. They are a taxing body. I know that in the ninth ward, we pay taxes to them. Some people are pleased with the service. Some people would like more, um, considering we really don't. I think we have in my ward two parks and both of them are top lots. And so people are looking for, you know, more for their money in terms of tax dollars in Evanston. So I think starting with Ridgeville, obviously including all the skaters, particularly those who have been working on this all summer with the makeshift park they did have, makes a lot of sense. And hopefully Ridgeville, given the expansive amount of land that they have, would be willing to partner with us. Um, so that we're not taking away potential parking spaces as Alderman Rue Simmons mentioned or, or other, or other areas that, um, you know, maybe aren't ready to go. To your point, Alderman Wynn, I do think having everything accessible is great. Um, but you know, if Ridgeville is, is available, I, I don't, I hope that we won't limit having maybe something over here because, you know, kids would have to bike or skate or get a ride. I mean, Evanston is not that big, so it would be great to have everything that you didn't need to ride. But people in South Evanston drive all the time to stuff. So, you know, I don't want to say that we can't have this or this is limited because it needs to be right smack dab in the middle of the city. So hopefully the conversation we'll have with Ridgeville is productive. And, you know, if people do have private dollars, that would be fantastic. But, um, for the sake of tonight, I would love for us to move on to the affordable housing that also that we have a lot of people waiting to talk about. It's super important as well.
Alderman Fess.
Yeah, just, uh, quickly, I'd like to volunteer to serve on the discussion committee. So if somebody could just write my name and let me know about that, thank you.
All right, Erica, Erica's got all the names.
I do, I do. All right, well, I think, uh, we've got some good direction to, uh, have some community meetings with our, uh, skateboarding community and get their feedback and then, uh, have a discussion with Ridgeville Park District. Uh, so we'll take that and then come back to you, uh, in the near future.
Great, thank, thank, thank you, Erica. And thank you, everybody, for that came out to speak about, uh, the need for a skate park here in Evanston. Uh, we're now going to move to the items on the agenda that relate to, uh, housing and homelessness, um, and affordable housing. So Alderman Rainey, if you could please move SP2?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, SP2 is Affordable Housing and Homelessness, an update for the City Council. This memorandum updates the City Council on the projects and activities to address the City Council goal of expanding affordable housing, um, options in Evanston that have been undertaken since the Affordable Housing Update on January 21, as well as actions taken to address homelessness and housing insecurity due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff requests that it be accepted and placed on file. Uh, that's why I move, uh, that we accept it and place it on file, but I'm sure there's going to be a presentation.
Second?
All right, great. So, uh, thank you, Alderman Rainey, and I'm going to turn it over now to, uh, City Manager Storley to begin this discussion.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I wanted to, before we get started on the presentation, just give a shout out to our staff who have been really nimble and really, uh, aggressive about getting housing grants, lots of FEMA money. We've been able to successfully, uh, rehouse and support a lot of our homeless residents during the pandemic. So enough can't be said about, uh, the hard worker staff over the past, uh, almost a year now. Uh, but that will come up in the presentation. Um, so I'm just going to turn it over at this point in time to Johanna Lerner, Community Development Director, uh, who will kick off the presentation.
Uh, great, thank you, City Manager Storley. Uh, good evening, Johanna Niden, Community Development Director. Uh, Luke, whenever you're ready, we'll take the presentation, the PowerPoint. Okay, great. Uh, so again, this is, we have, it's been about a year, um, almost a year to the day. I think when we last, uh, met to talk about this. And, uh, as we sit here today, we're going to talk about, uh, greatly different things that have happened in our community and how we've responded to them. And as, uh, Erica mentioned, as a community, we've done a, a pretty tremendous job in, uh, responding to challenging and, and unforeseen and never previously experienced, uh, a pandemic and, uh, our ability to support residents and really look at how we're going to respond to the upcoming challenges. We got the next slide. Uh, if we were in council chambers, we would probably say, all right, for those working on the housing, uh, and grants staff, please stand up, uh, because we have a couple of new faces that, uh, nobody has had the opportunity to meet in person. So most of you know, uh, myself and Sarah Flax, uh, but we've added two new staff members to our team. Marion Johnson and Megan Geifson, uh, have, who joined the city this, this past, uh, summer fall as our Housing and Economic Policy Analyst. And, uh, finally, we have Jessica Wingeter, who has been our, uh, Senior Grants Compliance, uh, staff member, uh, who's been with the city for, uh, many years in different capacities, but we're happy to have her, um, doing good work in housing and grants. Uh, next slide. And of course, uh, while we do a lot with, with housing and homelessness issues, uh, we cannot do it alone. And this is just a small snapshot, we've shown this slide before, of the other partners, developers, nonprofits, other, other individuals throughout the city and the broader community that support the work of bringing more affordable housing, more housing opportunities and, um, rehousing homeless, um, individuals, as well as wraparound services that provide the support to those who need housing. Uh, next slide. Uh, and then before I turn it over to the other staff, um, just a, a general overview. We're going to go over, uh, the, our, the city's response to COVID-19 and how that has shaped and changed over the past, uh, nearly year and how we've responded to different aspects of the challenges that we've met. Uh, and then we will go through some of the short-term impacts and trends. I think, uh, a day doesn't go by where we don't see, uh, a series of news, articles or broadcasts or any kind of, um, information about what does this all mean? How, how, how will we live our lives a little differently based on what we're experiencing in COVID and what that means to the housing market? Uh, and then we'll talk about some longer-term trends and impacts that we might see. A year ago, we were talking about what the Affordable Housing Task Force was doing in terms of developing, developing an Affordable Housing Plan. And, uh, when the pandemic hit and it was clear that the, the way in which we live our lives and the way in which we reside was, uh, changing, uh, we put a pause to that and, uh, have started to do a little bit of work on envisioning what a comprehensive plan might look like for the city of Evanston. Our plan is over 20 years old, uh, and, uh, looking ahead to new census information and other longer-term impacts and trends, putting together, uh, what that would look like for the city of Evanston. And also for those of us who've been around for more than a few years, uh, we know that we have a really good track record of adopting plans right before their major market changes. So we adopted our previous comp plan right before nine 11, uh, our downtown plan before, before and during the Great Recession, uh, housing plan right before the Great Recession. So, uh, really want to make sure that we can adopt a plan, uh, after we've seen a market change and we can better adapt and, and let it sit, not so much sit on the shelf. Um, so with that, I will turn it over to Sarah to give you an update on what we've, um, what our response to COVID-19 has been so far.
Thank you, Johanna. Um, I'm going to start with the start of the pandemic. And, um, our community response was both immediate and extraordinary. Um, following the nationwide emergency declared on March 13th and Governor Pritzker's stay-at-home order on March 21st, the city of Evanston, Connections for the Homeless and other partners mobilized, um, to ensure the safety of our most vulnerable populations, uh, got 327 homeless people, uh, including 20% children, uh, into hotel rooms. FEMA, non-congregate housing, a term we hadn't even heard before, um, or socially-distanced congregate shelter to protect them from the coronavirus. There's just sort of two groups. There was, um, the group of people who really had been living on the street, many of them chronically homeless, that Connections and other, um, nonprofits had been working with, uh, regularly, but also our sort of invisible homeless group. And those are the people who are couch surfing and dabbled up. Um, often this is where families with children, um, fall into our homeless groups. Um, so really a vulnerable population that, for those of you who remember the, um, heading home, the plan to end homelessness in, that was, uh, approved in, uh, 2012. Um, that's that second tier of the, um, homeless population that, that we talked about. And one of the tiers that is sometimes served by programs like, um, our TEEPER program. One of the things we saw in this group is the inequitable impact of COVID-19 on, um, people of color. Um, the group in the hotels, um, was 68% black or African-American. Also 41% had some disabling conditions. So these really are some of our residents. So these really are some of our residents of deepest need. But about half of them have already been moved, of the people from the hotels, have been moved into permanent housing with rent assistance, some for assistance up to 12 months. But even with that, we still have about 60 people in shelter at the Margarita Inn or at Interfaith Overnight Shelter. And of those, there are still, in addition to those, there are still about 50 people, excuse me, that don't have either overnight or day shelters. So we still need some additional capacity, at least for some things. Next slide. This took an unprecedented level of financial support as well. And this is more than a bit of an eye chart. I'm not going to go through every single part of it. But the amount of funding that has been allocated and/or expended for homeless services from March through, most of it's through the end of 2020, when it's the homeless services. But the rent assistance goes on significantly longer because of the length of the rent supports is really tremendous. You can see many of the things that are broken out that I already mentioned that were accomplished. What did it take to do this? FEMA Public Assistance Dollars that both the city of Evanston and Connections secured. Additional CARES Act funding, Evanston got ESG-CV and CDB-GCV. And Cook County has put a significant amount of their emergency relief dollars into the efforts in Evanston, mostly through their work with Connections for the homeless. But there was also tremendous community response that was led by the Evanston Community Foundation and included our not, other nonprofits, our businesses, faith organizations, and individuals. I just want to use an example sort of for perspective. In a normal year, the city of Evanston would allocate around $260,000 using our ESG, regular CDBG, and some of our Mental Health Board funding for homeless needs. That would account for about 5% of the total we just talked about here. Next slide, please. So that was the immediate response for homeless needs. But what we now have to do is build the capacity and the resiliency to address ongoing needs and also be prepared for potential future crises. And returning to an 18-bed congregate shelter plus 30 emergency beds in cold weather really won't do it. We have an immediate need for day-and-night shelter for about 50 more people, as I already said. Right now, Interfaith turns away about 30 people each night. So that's where part of the capacity is determined from. And also, Connections is working with people in their drop-in services that they know are not sheltered. But we really do need an ongoing, there's an ongoing need for a 24/7 shelter that can house, temporarily house between 70 and 100 people. And it also has to meet all of the types of things that we've learned from COVID-19. There has to be ability to give people their own space. Not only is it essential in health situations like COVID-19 or, but it also really enables many of them to work on their situation and improve their situation by actually having the space to deal with the needs of their lives. There are some people, however, that still need congregate shelters. So we need a balance there. This is something that's going to take significant funding. And when you, trying to just even get a scale for that, the cost of running the current shelter at the Margarita Inn, which has, as I said, congregate and a little, mostly non-congregate, but a little bit of congregate shelter, and has about 70 people, is about $225,000 a month. So that, the operating budget is about $2.7 million annually. So that's way more than, obviously, we've been expending. We have to, we have to figure out how to pay for this. There's potential to reduce operating costs by acquiring a permanence site. That's something we have to look at. Other challenges coming out of this, many of the people who are in the shelter now need permanent supportive housing. A shorter-term rent subsidy doesn't fill their needs. There's a real shortage of permanent supportive housing, both in Evanston but throughout Cook County. We're also going to need more rent assistance, rent subsidies of all different kinds. Not going to get into all the different types. There are many, both short and long-term. Next slide. So that was the homeless population. But COVID-19 has also increased housing insecurity for people who were housed reasonably stably, particularly people who already were struggling with housing cost burden, lower-income households who lost income and are unable to pay their rent. About $960,000 of rent assistance has already been provided by Connections for the Homeless with state prevention dollars, and also the city of Evanston's emergency and general assistance programs. That has helped 364 households and provided assistance between $2,500 and $2,700 on average. We know that 372 Evanston renters applied for the State of Illinois ERA program and also for the Cook County rent assistance, but we have not yet gotten who, how many have gotten helped. Those provided amounts from $4,500 to $5,000. Council just approved a $500,000 rent assistance program with our CDB-GCV. That is, we're estimating that that will help approximately 50 households with larger subsidies, because we're working really specifically to target people who have greater arrears and other higher needs from COVID. Now, one of the things we're also seeing is some of the people who were helped early also need additional help. So this isn't, it's not like we know exactly how much is going to be needed and then we can solve that problem. It's, it's, it's going to change depending on what happens with our recovery from the pandemic and what return of jobs we have and other parts of the recovery. Illinois is going to be receiving about $843 million in rent assistance for, through the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021 that was just signed in late December. Evanston won't get funding directly. We will have to work with Cook County on that. Allocations were made only to governmental entities with 200, populations of 200,000 or more. So that ruled out, the only city in Illinois that got funding directly is the city of Evanston. In addition to rent assistance, there's been, we've been maintaining and expanding landlord tenant services. The focus right now of most of the calls is eviction. This is the first time that repairs has been not the top reason for calls. We're working with Metropolitan Tennis Organization and Lawyers Committee for Better Housing. Cook County also just recently launched a Cook County Illegal Aid Program that we're going to help publicize and try to make sure that people get that assistance. Not all of it's been spent on housing. Food assistance also. There, we've allocated or expended $283,000 of CDB-GCV. Cook County contributions and also private contributions to expand access to healthy food. And this doesn't even remotely take into account all of the food assistance through the Evanston Community Foundation and many, many faith organizations, small businesses, all kinds of stuff. So that's what we have done in the short term, let's call it the short term, as the immediate response. Between those two efforts, that is almost $10 million that has been allocated or expended in about a year to address these immediate needs. But the impact of COVID-19 is far from over, and more people may become homeless due to unpaid rent when the eviction moratorium wears off. So next, we'll hear more about other trends and things we're seeing that we're trying to plan to address. Jessica?
Thank you, Sarah. Next slide, please. So it's difficult to locate eviction numbers specific to Evanston. We know that general trends for the city tend to mirror Chicago's trends. So we've taken Chicago surveys and data and extrapolated information that we feel best provides a picture for our community. This graph shows the sudden drop in eviction filings for 2020 compared to the average number of filings per month due to the eviction moratorium. This is one indicator that we have a potential backlog of evictions pending. The orange bar is the 2010 through 2019 eviction averages, and the blue bars recommend or recognize our drop in evictions. In Chicago, 21,000 or 3.5% of renter households are at risk of eviction in a normal year. So we also know that a majority of the households facing eviction are minority households. Evictions happen to black and households of color at five times higher rates. So this graph doesn't take into account the impact of the pandemic. We don't know how to anticipate the impact of COVID on evictions. We can only review past trends to get a sense of where we might be in a typical year. And Sarah touched on some of the supports that we hope are helping those households that are in this sort of open white area between our eviction trends and the drop in evictions that we've seen. Based on this information, even with the new stimulus packet, we're anticipating that households at risk of eviction that have been further negatively impacted will need a lot of support to become stable. Next slide, please. We can further extract from this survey the percentages of households that struggled to pay usual household expenses during the pandemic. These expenses include housing costs, utilities, and food, but may also include car payments, credit debt, and other monthly expenses. I think this slide speaks for itself in terms of the populations that are hardest-hit and most at-risk. Next slide, please. The survey also reveals that approximately 25% of renters and 15% of homeowners have little to no confidence in their ability to pay next monthly housing costs on time. The combined numbers of renters and homeowners in Evanston who may need assistance with recovery based on data are about 5,000 or 20% of our community. The conclusion we can draw is that renters are more negatively impacted, but housing is only one part of the equation. Difficulty meeting monthly expenses is only one way to define the at-risk population. The question becomes, how do we best support negatively impacted community members? Next slide, please. We know that the way we provide resources in the past will not address the emerging needs caused by the pandemic. Additionally, the city has been reviewing ways to support more equitable outcomes for residents for several years, following practices identified by the Social Services Core Committee in 2019. To best provide services, staff should employ a client-focused approach that incorporates residents' needs and perspectives. We do this by leveraging case management relationships throughout our community. We must also lead with a racial equity lens to address longstanding barriers for our Black, Indigenous, and people of color. We want our recovery efforts to work in tandem with other city service providers, including our Health and Human Services Department, which also recognizes the link between housing and additional health outcomes. All departments on board with the idea that where people live, learn, work, play, worship, and age affect a wide range of health functioning and quality of life outcomes and risks. This concept, defined by the Bay Area Regional Health in Equities Initiative, or BARI, is foundational to our E Plan. Even though the E Plan won't be available until March of 2022, planning is already underway and incorporates the same philosophy. So we want to make sure that we're not working in a silo, but we're also taking into consideration what other departments are doing. So we further recognize that COVID's negative impact on housing stability and household finances has led, has led to increased rates of depression, anxiety, more displacement, and homelessness. Next slide, please. So to ensure city resources best support those in need, staff has implemented the reorganization of the way external partners are funded, as reviewed by the Rules Committee in October of 2020. This restructure, as reflected in this, our planning approach slide, the goal in the upcoming grant cycle is to fund programs that provide quantifiable services and measurable outcomes, use contractual fee-for-service agreements when appropriate for specific services that are otherwise hard to procure, and condition the release of payments and continued funding on the achievement of these specified outcomes. This process works in partnership with agencies serving community members while also providing financial resources to obtain additional needed supports identified through the case management process. Similar to T-BRA or LAN, this process would provide wraparound holistic services to individuals and families. Clients would identify barriers, whether they be lack of health insurance or educational needs, childcare, and additional funds could, would be used to secure the needed services that would help families and individuals become self-sufficient in our community. So with that, I'm going to transition to Marion.
Thank you, Jessica. So COVID is having a major impact on how we live, and it's also accelerating long-term existing trends. That's what I'm going to be covering. Next slide, please. Thank you. New telework habits are changing how we work and live. It's clear that telework is here to stay. Office suites are likely to become the new amenity in multifamily buildings. Developers are reshaping their floor plans to address these needs. Zoom rooms or office spaces are in high demand from both renters and buyers. Under spaces are also in high demand. It's not seen anymore as just an added bonus. People want to be outdoors more for health purposes. It's also seen as a way to safely socialize, and it's a way to make potentially stay-at-home mortars more comfortable. And then COVID and the disruption it created in our public transportation has resulted in an overwhelming demand in biking. Bike shops have been running out of inventory. This is pointing to a large number of new users for recreational purposes or commuting purposes. They're forming new habits, and they're likely to stick to those habits to a certain degree. Next slide, please. What are the changes in our rental market? Well, nationwide, the trend is showing that renters are sticking to urban areas, but using the situation as an opportunity to either upgrade to larger units or better amenities, or to lower their costs. Uncertainty has also driven demand in shorter lease terms as well. Next slide, please. Locally in Evanston, what we're seeing is that the market trends tend to follow similar trends as Chicago in general, where the average rent dropped by 1.2% as of September 2020. There's a continuing downtrend forecast for 2021 in average rents. There's also a lot of concession right now for new leases, mostly free rents. And student not being fully back on and off campus are having a definite impact on our rental market. Now, while higher-priced multifamily units are headed to a slowdown nationwide, it seems like the Evanston market is likely to experience a slowdown, but to a lesser extent. Anecdotal feedback is pointing to a potential influx of residents from the Chicago area, such as Lincoln Park and downtown, looking to relocate to Evanston. Additionally, units in smaller buildings, such as small 2-4 flats and coach houses, are also in high demand right now, as renters are looking to avoid health risks. Next slide, please. So as far as the ownership market, the short story is Evanston is really hot. We're seeing a very low inventory, a supply of about 1.5 months versus the six months considered to be healthy for a market. There's been really big increases in median prices, plus 14% already this year to last year, and an average median sale price of about $450,000. The forecast for 2020, 2021 is a continuation of this trend with another increase of about 10% for 2021. Next slide, please. There are other factors impacting our real estate market, too. There are other factors impacting our real estate market, too. The record-low mortgage interest rates are making home buying more attractive, but it's creating a very competitive market with instant offers and the need for buyers to be fully financially prepared. There's also a current uncertain climate that's prompting senior households to postpone or revisit their plans to change their downsized housing, and it's likely to impact our market in the long term. Finally, telework is creating new opportunities for many families that now have more options to relocate. That's likely to impact the groups of residents that are struggling or were struggling to find housing options suitable and affordable to them, and that could lead to a shift in demographics. Middle-class Black households have, per example, been reported by Zillow Research to be 29% more likely than others to relocate as a result of telework. That's based on a combination of factors such as job types, ability to work remotely, and income level. Next slide, please. We're also facing some long-term changes that were already underway pre-COVID, such as population shifts. As of 2020, Illinois has been losing population for the seventh year in a row. There's a lot of contradicting information available to explain this trend. While Evanston has not experienced a significant loss of total population, our demographics are absolutely shifting. Between 2010 and 2019, we've experienced a significant loss of Black residents. Recent UIC report on population trends in Chicago and Cook County are showing that most Black households leaving were relocating to surrounding counties. Evanston had already started taking steps prior to COVID to address some of this shift through the reparation work. Next slide, please. Now, additional data also shows us that in Illinois, between 2010 and 2019, the vast majority of people were moving within the state for housing-related reasons. Almost 5 million households were reporting moving due to housing reasons versus less than 1.5 million for the next highest ranked reason, which on this graph is family-related reasons. Telework as a long-term trend is likely going to be an additional factor in the relocation in the future. Next slide, please. The other long-term trends that are likely to continue and impact us are the appeal of walkability in community. Walkability is more and more becoming a key point for both young and senior residents. We're finding that despite COVID-19, younger generation are still likely to choose a location over larger units. Buildings and neighborhoods that are fostering a sense of community are likely to stay in high demand as well. While COVID has impacted how we live in close proximity, the same trend of telework is likely to make this feature crucial to buyers and renters. And then finally, the lack of variety of housing options and limited affordability in Evanston was already a challenge prior to COVID. It's likely to continue and accelerate in the future, especially based on the recent trend we're seeing in our market. Middle-income households are more likely to relocate due to lack of affordability. Next slide, please. Can you click one more time, please? Thank you. So what can we expect from those shifts? While we're expecting to see an increase in income inequalities with existing gaps widening, our higher-income and homeowner households are likely to benefit from the uptrending real estate market and the record-low mortgage rates, and that's going to result in some wealth building. Our lower-income renters, Black, Indigenous, and people of color households are likely to be much more financially impacted by COVID-19. They are less likely to benefit from the upending real estate market and the lower mortgage rates. And the recent change in cuts to public transportation are also more likely to impact them. So our housing issue are increasingly impacting a larger person of our population, and what that means is that the potential, we're looking at a potential loss of a whole group of low- and middle-income residents. And Megan is going to be covering the next section.
Great. Thank you, Marion. So with these changing conditions in mind, we're going to use this last section of the presentation to talk about some of the really positive things that are happening in our city. So I want to touch on these four areas of focus on this slide that the city has made real progress on, especially in the last year, in service of these larger goals and the context my colleagues have just outlined, despite the challenges that we're up against. So I'm going to take you through each of these topics one by one. So the first of these is our goal to fund more affordable housing units. So one of the biggest successes that we've had on that front is the Evergreen Project on Howard Street. So this project totaled about $23 million and includes a $2 million investment from the city using both the Affordable Housing Fund and Home Investment Partnership Program. This development yields 60 units total. 24 of those units are at 60% AMI, and the other 36 are at or below 50% AMI. So in other words, the units here, as you can see, are falling across a variety of AMIs with a really good number of deeply affordable units. Another success is Jackson Avenue, which is a project by HODC, who developed an accessory dwelling unit on the property. I'm going to dive a little more into ADUs in a couple of slides. So next slide, please. Another goal of ours is to develop affordable housing units in market-rate housing. So I want to touch briefly on developments that are coming through the pipeline, starting with those that have already been improved and are in motion. So we had two plan developments that were approved that are going to generate three and 34 units, respectively totaling 37 units, with one contributing $525,000 in fees and lieu. Ridge is currently under construction. We also have two more plan developments moving through the entitlement process right now that will contribute 26 additional affordable units, and there are even more in the pipeline. Next slide, please. So how have we approached achieving this goal of getting affordable units in market-rate developments? I'm going to pause here just for a moment so that you can all take a look at how this effort has evolved over time and take some time explaining it. So these graphs include developments that are not necessarily subject to the IHO, but as you can see, since the first units that were negotiated in a plan development in 2003, we've gotten 77 developed units at differing affordability levels. So what we're looking at is the chart on the left shows affordable units at different income levels by year and by AMI. And on the right is the total number of units. So these are affordable units in market-rate developments, like I said, shown in the year when they're available to rent up, which means after they've been designed, developed, and are now ready to have folks move into them. The city has been working to get affordable units in market-rate housing going back to 2003, as this chart shows. The results were sporadic, but you can see that since then, and especially last year, the city has done a particularly good job of making this happen with 2020 showing a good number of units with good parity across lower AMI levels. And so how did this come to be? Next slide, please. So here, we can see that there have been a series of adjustments made to the IHO, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, over the years that are meant to address changes in the market, changes in our housing goals as a city. And I'm going to focus here specifically on the second iteration of the IHO, because this current one is really helping us accomplish our goal of getting more onsite affordable units in market-rate developments, like we just saw in the previous slide. And the key here is the restructuring of the bonuses for onsite units, which really allows developers to offset the costs of affordable units. And this was not an accident, right? The IHO was designed to encourage the development of affordable units in market-rate housing. This is also supported by the Fees and Loo, which are now linked to the Consumer Price Index, excuse me, and as such, they're being increased gradually over time. A couple other notes on the IHO here. Plan developments are also getting through and approved more rapidly, so there's a much easier process nowadays. Waitlist management by a nonprofit provides an efficient service for prospective households and developers to fill their units, sort of takes that burden. And the takeaway here is that the IHO is really functioning as we intended, which is to create more onsite units. While at the same time, we recognize that the IHO, this is a living, breathing policy document, right? So it's going to continue to evolve as we go along. And the caveat here is that IHO units are not a viable solution for very low-income families. And so we're kind of looking at this as a partial solution to affordability issues in Evanston. As we've said before in this presentation, you know, additional funding and publicly funding projects are going to be required to address housing challenges, specifically for those households that fall below that 50% AMI threshold. And last on this slide, I just want to emphasize here that Evanston is really a leader in the implementation of our IHO. We have fielded many calls from other communities and even Illinois APA to answer questions on how this is working in our community. Next slide. Thanks. Another area in which Evanston is leading is in accessory dwelling units, or ADUs for short. This is really important because they speak specifically to the housing needs here in our market locally. So when we think about our goals in this area, we consider how ADUs do a couple of important things. These include supporting naturally affordable units, getting more units in high-cost areas of single-family zoning. And we kind of recognize in that that, you know, just building more ADUs is not the goal in and of itself. It's that we're adding affordable units to the stock. And we also recognize with this work that the way that we can kind of conceptualize ADUs is through a life cycle, right? That they can really be developed in a way that meets the needs of residents and their families' needs over time, across generations, across uses. I'm not going to get too much into the history of ADU policy in Evanston, but I will say that this most recent update to our regulations this last September, which now allows internal or attached ADUs, is really exciting. It's creating much greater flexibility for homeowners here in Evanston to develop these units on their properties. And last thing I'll say about this is, just to mention how we're facilitating this work. So we're currently developing an ADU guidebook with funding from AARP and in partnership with the Evanston Development Cooperative. We're going to be hosting webinars for Evanston residents to get more information on this topic. We are exploring financing options, especially for lower-income seniors who are, you know, maybe looking to Asian place and want to rent out their principal residence or make some rental income. We are collaborating with IDA. And finally, we're assessing the need for an amnesty program for existing internal ADUs. And, you know, the change that we expect to see from these shifts in regulations are not going to be instant. It's new, but we're really optimistic about what this might do for housing in Evanston. Next slide, please. Thanks. So we've talked a lot about rental needs. I specifically talked a lot about rental needs, which ties to our goals of affordability, but we're also interested in sharing how we're maintaining homeownership for a broader range of income levels. So I'm going to quickly give an update on just a few key programs that speak to this goal. The first is the ETHS Geometry and Construction Project. This was put on hold when students weren't on campus any longer due to COVID, but there are seven completed houses to date, and the eighth is in construction, is in the construction phase. And, you know, this is like a small but really meaningful way to add permanently affordable ownership houses to this housing stock. They're affordable at the point of sale, and then they're maintained through the land trust with community partners for affordable housing. SEPA, Community Partners for Affordable Housing, will also be managing construction work for CDBG Housing Rehab in 2021, which is going to help do a couple of things. It's going to reduce the cost per project, expand our capacity to do more projects, and it's going to access additional funding for this program. The First Northern Credit Union Financial Wellness Program is helping lower-income residents understand financing, get credit scores in order to improve their situations with the opportunity to buy in the future. And just as importantly, it's addressing barriers for those low-income households and people of color to be able to access these things, as Marion had previously mentioned. We are also continuing to provide information on IDA's down payment assistance programs for which Evanston residents can be eligible. And finally, the Restorative Housing Reparations Program, which is in development currently by the Reparations Committee, is going to provide up to $25,000 to eligible people toward, you know, down payment assistance, to purchase a new home in Evanston, home improvement programs, or to pay down mortgage principles on a home that they own. And this is, of course, in order to build equity in home and wealth and addressing discriminatory lending practices that have occurred here in the city of Evanston. And the takeaway here from these many programs I've mentioned is that there really is no one-size-fits-all to addressing affordable housing here in our community. These pieces are all doing something different, and we really see them as overlapping intricate opportunities to address our goals of, like I mentioned before, funding affordable housing, getting affordable units in market-rate housing, expanding the housing types we see here, and supporting homeownership. So yeah, with that, I'll just say I am super new to this team, so I'm going to attempt to bring this home by passing this back off to Johanna to wrap things up.
Thank you. Next slide. So this is really just a summary of everything we've talked about. Big picture is in some ways our short-term picture of the next year of what our recovery looks like from COVID as a community, as a region, as a country, and what our impact. I think our team is very well-prepared for this. Our city is well-prepared for this. We addressed the Great Recession with an SP2, $18.5 million through a massive, multi-year project. I think we're well poised to see what the federal government cooks up, starting hopefully tomorrow, hit the ground running to determine how we can best benefit Evanston, Illinois, and our region. But we welcome any feedback or thoughts as we look to this next year in affordable housing work.
All right. Well, thank you, Johanna. And, you know, the sobering news is if you thought affordable housing was tough a year ago, it's even tougher now, right? But the good news is we have quite a team here in Evanston that's working on housing, and I just want to acknowledge all of them, especially because this is the first time in the public has gotten to see all the folks. They get to see you, Johanna. They get to see Sarah Flax a lot. They don't necessarily get to see Jessica and Marion and Megan, and they're pretty new, some folks on your team and everything. So thank you for all of the really good work. There's a lot. This is a very meaty report. There's a lot in here. So thank you very much for that. I know we've got lots of comments and questions from our aldermen, so I'm going to start with Alderman Fisk and then Ravel, and then Wynton Wilson.
Well, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you. I mean, that is an amazing report and so clear with so much information and good research. And I'm really, I think you knocked that one out of the park. What I would like to see is that in a format that can be a standalone piece on the city website for people who have questions about affordable housing. It's a little bit hard for us to cut and paste and forward that on to people who have written to us with questions, but I think as a standalone piece on the city's website, that would be really helpful to everyone. So again, thank you all very much. Just a great report.
Here. Who did I say next? Alderman? Let's go to Alderman Braithwaite. I didn't say you next, Alderman Braithwaite, but you got your hand up, and I had so many names, I'm just going to go around. Next, after you, I'm going to go to Alderman Ravel and then Wynton.
I appreciate you calling on me. And I just want to quickly say thank you very much to our staff, Johanna and your team for presenting a really comprehensive report. My takeaway are two things. Number one, we will never, there just will never be enough affordable housing in our market to remedy this. And I think there was a part of the presentation that highlighted homeownership that I was almost going to ask you to pause because I think for people of color or families that fall in the low-income bracket, like that's the solution. And I'm not going to expound on it, but it's going to take a mind shift that if you want to stay in Evanston. I mean, I tell people all the time, like, this is, it's prime real estate. Your report highlighted it. I said that Evanston is like the Beverly Hills of the North Shore, given the proximity of the Chicago, the fact that we have Northwestern, the lakefront, and all of our amenities. And I think that was like a really good call-out from our staff. This is just me using my own words. So I want to give Alderman Simmons a lot of credit, not only for leading on reparations, but I think it was two months ago she held a really good workshop series about homeownership. And if you're Black and Brown and if you're low-income, she highlighted credit reports, the pathway to homeownership. She brought in a ton of resources. I don't know how many, I can't remember how many people attended, but clearly, we need to be looking in that direction if you want to stay in Evanston long-term. And I'll say it again, it's going to take a mind shift. Renting is not the solution that does nothing to help you build wealth. Finding an affordable condo unit for our younger families is key. And Alderman Simmons, I hope that, you know, the workshop that you designed is something that we're doing on a more frequent basis to help maintain our people of color here in town. So thank you again, and you have made it very clear, at least where I'm going to be focusing my attention over the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Ravel, and then Alderman Wynton.
Well, thank you to staff for this really wonderful, wonderful report and the amazing story of what...
And the amazing story of what the community has been able to do these past 10, 11 months is really, really fantastic in terms of an unbelievable amount of money that's been able to be gathered and spent to try to keep our residents housed as best we can. I have, I guess, two questions. One is you touched on the need for basically a 24/7 year-round permanent shelter. And I'm wondering, are there discussions underway about how we might proceed to try to make that happen? Is anybody, how can we work on that? I don't know who wants to answer that.
I think Sarah, you're on mute still.
There. If I can get myself unmuted. There is discussion, and, you know, we do. We're going to have to talk more about a permanent site, because that is something that ultimately will allow us to really succeed at stabilizing people. One of the problems that we've had, when the federal government did its huge reorganization of how they looked at helping the homeless that was approved in 2009, I think it was, again, great timing, huh? They really took away all support for shelters, because they said, "We're going to rapidly rehouse people. We're going to get people rapidly into permanent housing." But that doesn't really work if you don't have permanent housing right there to rapidly rehouse them into, and if you can't stabilize them and work with them long enough to be able to make progress. Now, you know, I'm not saying we want to go back to the period where people would say, "Oh, you're only going to be housed if you're already doing X, Y, Z." It's not that we're walking away from housing first, but we just need to be able to work with and stabilize people. One of the things that the Alliance to End Homelessness is supporting and pushing is use of CBGCV. Cook County has a lot of it. Cook County has not been using its CBGCV for its rent assistance programs and things like that right now, because they were using up the emergency assistance money through CARES Act first. We had also talked about trying to use some of our CARES Act CBG funding, but it could only be a very small part, and we may need to use that up for other services earlier. But we could look at our regular CBG. And the other thing that we could do, but we haven't ever done, is to consider a Section 108 loan. As long as we, you know, we'd have to work out, how do we pay that back? Is the loan paid back through some of our CBG entitlement or through some other source, like the Affordable Housing Fund? But when you use a Section 108 loan, it does not go against the city's debt the way bonding or something like that does. And so it's taken, it is backed by the full power of the federal government, but it is bringing non-federal money that is actually what is the source of funding for those loans. And I think that's something that we could look at to see if it would be a feasible way to provide at least some of the funding needed for something like that.
And presumably, we'd be doing this in partnership with one or more of our local nonprofits.
Well, absolutely. Connections for the Homeless, obviously, we've been in discussion, and you heard from Interfaith Action. They too are very, very committed to this. You know, many of you know Sue Murphy. If Sue Murphy has to turn away people at a cold-weather shelter, this is not something that Sue Murphy... So everybody knows the cold-weather overnight shelter is not a solution. It is way better than not having anything, but we have to shift from that, so.
Right. Yeah, right. Thanks, Sarah. Then the other topic I wanted to get to was actually the last line on the last slide, which is affordable housing planning effort. And we've seen some, you know, the nice graphs about the progress we've made in the last few years of getting some affordable units through the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And we're starting to see now some affordable housing through our ADU efforts. But clearly, just the two of those are not going to get us anywhere close to achieving the kinds of increases in affordable housing that we want to see in Evanston. So we really do need to get back to the Affordable Housing Plan so we can come up with some really good strategies, some goals, and, you know, really make a commitment to finding new ways to find more solutions for affordable housing. So I guess I'm asking staff whether we have the staff power to be able to reconvene the Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee.
Alderman Ravel, yes, we can start, we can regroup on some of those things now that it's a new calendar year, and we're starting to get a better feel for what the year might hold. But we also want to be mindful to plan, to make sure we're doing that planning and coordination with other planning efforts, things around transportation, open space. All the things that we've learned are vital to existing in this current pandemic, post-pandemic life, make sure that we're coordinating with all those different aspects. But certainly, taking the momentum that was built over the past few years with the Affordable Housing Task Force and other partners, making sure that we don't put a full stop on that and just pick up on our cause.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. We've got Alderman Winn and then Alderman Wilson.
Well, I'll be brief, because I think Alderman Ravel raised some of the questions that I had, both about coming up with a 24/7 shelter that understandably does that, as you said, Sarah Flax, provides some type of supportive housing while people can get on their feet and then move into a more permanent solution. I also want to hear more about some type of permanent supportive housing and what type of plan there is for that. Because there definitely, there are always going to be people in our community that do need supportive housing, that really can't be just sort of stood up and sent off, because that just doesn't work for them. So I think that's critically important as well. And I just want to compliment the staff. I mean, this was, I'm going to go back and listen to this all over again and read it again in very great detail. I felt like I was reading something coming out of a university. This is really, really interesting to look at these, this data that you've gathered and the analysis that you've done and what it's forecasting for us in terms of how we plan. And this is what we need much, much, much more of. So my compliments to all of you on all of this. I felt like I was reading something out of CityLab or, you know, one of the university think tanks. So this is critically important, and we all need to understand it. And as Alderman Braithwaite said, I mean, there are these trends here that you are discussing in terms of who can continue to live here and who can't. And I think that is upsetting to many of us, because it looks like we're, you know, the city's demographics are definitely going to change, and we have to figure out how do we address that. But thank you all.
Thank you, Alderman Winn. We've got Alderman Wilson and then Alderman Rainey.
Thanks, and I'll start by agreeing with what Alderman Winn was just expressing. And I want to reiterate that this was an excellent, well-thought-out report, and we're going to have to make some changes in our long-term direction and thinking in order to continue to be effective. I do want to say thanks. I'm very grateful to Connections, the community partners, the staffs, and the businesses that have made these accomplishments that are in the report possible. This doesn't happen overnight, and it doesn't happen by accident. And there is an extraordinary amount of work that's gone into the successes that our community has seen. Peter covered some points on homeownership that I think are important. I don't think we should, as we talk about home, I'm sorry, housing, I don't want to overlook the idea of jobs and wages and economic development, because affordability is really driven by the lack of wages and good jobs, or the lack thereof. So I think that's a really important component that we should be trying to build into the conversation whenever possible. I think a permanent site is important, and I agree with that. I really, as we kind of develop these plans, want to see more robust focus on housing for families and into the neighborhoods and communities. And in a more, I guess, I think, a more acute need in the upcoming months, I want to see if there's a way to, I guess, make more legal resources available to people, because if there is going to be this crush of eviction and foreclosure activity, if there's a way to fund some of our legal partners or ways to get them resources, I think that's going to be important, because I think they're going to be overwhelmed by this. And we do not want people being taken advantage of unfairly or unduly. And I'm very concerned that that's a real problem. It's right on the horizon. So thank you for all of it. It's excellent work, and I appreciate the effort.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey, and then if there's any others, if you just want to put your hand up, I'll grab you. Make sure I get you in the order. You're on mute, Anne.
Thank you, Johanna, and your team, Sarah, and everyone. I also want to thank, though, the accessory people, such as Audrey Thompson and her crew, who take care of the food insecurity issues of people who may not be homeless but who are probably on the verge and who are really being helped by our community. I want to ask a question about, and Alderman Winn sort of touched on it. Do we do evaluations? Do we know how many of the people that we are housing are really permanently unemployed and are going to have to be assisted with housing forever? Do we know that? And I'd like to have that information at some point if we've done that.
We don't, I don't have that right now. But Connections does very thorough assessments. Of course, we can never estimate exactly what somebody will make, and we hope that most people will progress, but they have, we can try to get you more information on how many people, you know, are progressing out of. One of the goals, this is a little while ago. One of the things that was being used, we have permanent supportive housing. Connections has some. Impact Behavioral Health has some. And there was a period of time when we were working, our providers were working to use what are called flow vouchers from the Housing Authority as people got to the point where they didn't need permanent supportive housing, but they still needed supports to actually get them onto Housing Choice vouchers. Now, I will be frank, one of the huge reasons we get these bottlenecks is there simply isn't enough funding. And frankly, the $1.9 trillion American Rescue package that the almost-president Biden has already put out includes things like extending the eviction moratorium through September of 2021. You know, that, we still have to work on getting people's rent paid, because the landlords can't handle that. So it also includes $30 billion for emergency rent and utility assistance. Now, I've seen estimates that the unpaid rent, you know, nationwide, is $70 to $75 billion. So that's, I mean, these numbers are just frankly kind of beyond my scope, but it's really pretty overwhelming. But also, in Biden's platform, is re-going back to funding Housing Choice vouchers and other types of housing supports at levels that they used to be, because all of the support for housing has been going like this since 2000, I mean, since 1980, with blips during the recovery of, from the mortgage meltdown. So, you know, so it's kind of like, and there really hasn't been a commitment to funding housing needs. This idea that everybody can fund the most expensive thing in their lives without any assistance when they don't have a living wage doesn't work. Biden is also pushing a $15 minimum wage, which doesn't really get you to a living wage in Evanston for housing, but everything helps. So, yeah, hopefully, there's got to be a lot of work.
I would like to know, because when I say that, I don't mean somebody who's been unemployed for a few months and probably will get employed. I mean, you can evaluate and know that they're not employable, and they won't be employable.
Right. You can try to get...
That's a number I think that is important to know.
Yep.
I want to say one more thing, and that is a speaker during Citizen Comment who was commenting about affordable housing and quote-unquote "low-income housing" indicated that the corner of Chicago Avenue on Howard Street was going to have a low-income housing development. And that was a very terrible location for it because of gangs and guns and things. That development is not a low-income housing development. It is a market rate development, and it's hopefully going to get started in February. And it's a transit-oriented development, and it is going to have five units of affordable housing. He met the criteria, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance requirement. And it is, by the way, a half a block away from 223 units of market-rate rental housing and across the street from a lovely condominium building. So, you know, I feel very obligated to bust open these myths that continue to be perpetrated about Howard Street. And then down the street from there, the 60-unit building that our staff did a great job today supporting and reporting on is not a building being built by CJE. It is a building being built by Evergreen developers, and it's going to be on the tax rolls. And yes, we are very proud. It is an elevator building for seniors, and it's all affordable. So, and a wonderful story is that it was very embraced by the neighborhood behind it. And I think that is one big problem that we have in our town. Our community has to start accepting affordable housing. And I think we saw plenty of not accepting affordable housing tonight. So one of the things we have to do is start explaining what affordable housing is to our community. I mean, you hear people saying, "I really do approve of affordable housing, but..." And then the explanation comes out. And I really think that there are some issues in our community with affordable housing. And I am so proud of the Barton, Dobson, Brummel community for the way they really, really invited and accepted and supported the Evergreen project on Howard Street.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
You're welcome.
Any other aldermen that have any comments or questions? This part of the agenda. Okay, seeing none then? Could I ask for a vote? This was moved by Alderman Rainey, seconded, I believe, by Alderman Rue Simmons. This is SP2, the Affordable Housing and Homelessness Update for the City Council. So this is for action, just to accept and place on file this evening. City Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Yes. Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
All right, so on a nine-to-zero...
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't hear Alderman Braithwaite. And then Alderman Winn?
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk Reed. On a nine to zero vote, we have placed, accepted and placed on file the Affordable Housing and Homelessness Update. So thank you, Johanna, and your entire team, Sarah, and everyone else. Alderman Rainey, could you please move for discussion SP3?
SP3, yes, Mr. Mayor. SP3 is, am I, I'm not muted, right? SP3 is the sale of city-owned property at 1805 Church Street. Our staff is recommending we discuss with representatives of Mount Piscata Ministry, Inc. and Housing Opportunity Development Corporation, H O D C, to present their interest in acquiring city-owned property located at 1805 Church Street and 1708 to 10 Darrow for redevelopment as mixed use, mixed income housing. This is for discussion. I move for discussion.
Second.
So this has been moved and seconded. Alderman Rue Simmons.
Is there a staff report or presentation before I have comment?
Yes, Alderman Rue Simmons. Good evening and good evening to the rest of the City Council and City Clerk. I'm Paul Zalmasak. I serve as the Economic Development Manager for the city. I promise this will be a very short presentation. On December 2nd, the Economic Development Committee reviewed and approved staff recommendation to proceed with a partnership that is to be formed between the Mount Piscata Ministries and H O D C. Ideally, we would have been asking for authority to begin negotiations tonight, but we were required to notify through public noticing process for 15 to 30 days. That will, that puts us at the February 8th meeting. So we'll return then. Just again, I hope that night you'll give staff authority to begin negotiations. I will introduce H O D C and Mount Piscata in just a minute. There are a number of examples throughout the Chicago area where faith-based organizations need affordable housing development. And I anticipate that's what we'll see here. H O D C has been active at Evanston for a while. We've we've heard that a number of times tonight. And I think they're going to be helpful in helping Mount Piscata Ministries achieve their mission to both own the property but also to provide that affordable housing and mixed income development on the site. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Elder Wilson and Pastor Blakely, if they're still with us tonight. And I think they will introduce Richard Koenig as well from Housing Opportunity Development Corporation. So I'll check out and ask, there he is. Elder Wilson, thank you. Take over.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I've enjoyed everything that happened tonight, especially the presentation by the committee. It was it was very informative. I do appreciate that information as well. I'm not going to do much talking. My name is Pastor Wilson, Clifford Wilson. We're at 1813, between 1811 and 1815 Church Street. We've been in the city of Evanston for 40 years, and I did an obligation to to purchase the property at 1805 Church Street to complete the mission of building.
Pastor, you got you got muted somehow. Luke, can you make sure we can hear the pastor but mute everybody else? I know there was a little background noise there. There, there you are, Pastor. You're back.
Okay, I don't know what happened. I got kicked out once before and had to come back, so there must some 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 technical problem. But in any case, it has been our mission to 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 build to build this project. And in pursuit of doing that, we believe that God has brought us together with Richard Koenig from H O D C. And he's going to, I'm going to introduce him after I introduce one of our associate pastors, Pastor Eric Blakely is on the line tonight. He doesn't really unless he just want to have something to say to him, say hello, and then I, okay, he's waving away. That's very unusual for pastors when you give them opportunity to speak, but he's he's wasted his opportunity to speak. And I'm going to turn the the rest of the meeting over to Richard Koenig of H O D C. Richard?
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Council. We're excited with for the opportunity to talk with you about potentially developing the property at 1805 Church Street. We're excited to work with Mount Piscata Ministry. We're looking at doing a mixed use development that would include affordable housing, a retail component, a ministry component, a community component. So it is a project that will hopefully bring the community together, and this is, I think, the very, very first step in a long-term process. And a lot of involvement from the village help us move this forward and make this proposal a reality. Can you answer any questions or let you let us know if there's any other information that would be helpful to know tonight to to get this process going?
All right, so we're going to have both of you stick around in case there's any questions that council members have. Paul, was there anything else that you had before I turn it over to Alderman Rue Simmons?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Alder Roman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. I just wanted to express my enthusiastic support and gratitude for both bidders that were responsive, looking to partner and collaborate to advance the longtime vision of Mount Piscata Ministry and Elder Wilson. Having been there for decades and serving the community, the vision satisfies the hope and the values of the immediate community, looking to have more affordable housing, looking to have that commercial space, possibility of a financial institution in that space or or other, some community space. We're hoping that the City Council is in support of their partnership in us partnering with them in a development that also helps us with our goals as a community.
Thank you, Alderwoman Simmons. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, and and thank you, Alderman Simmons, and to the to the applicants. Also being on the Economic Development Committee, we've seen this evolve, and it's, I think it's a very exciting and appropriate opportunity for this location. I appreciate you guys getting together and working together on this. I think it's, this is a really great example of what we can do when we start to work together and look for these partnerships. So I really appreciate it, and I look forward to it.
All right, any other comments or questions? Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Richard and and Pastor Wilson, the little bit that I did read, it said mixed mixed income. And I think it would have been maybe 20 years ago, right before the huge recession, every, you know, big crane that you saw, we were building condos. And all I can ask is before you break ground is to see what type of support there is to do. I'm going to start saying affordable condos versus affordable housing and and really drive opportunities for homeownership. And hopefully, with the encouragement of the report that our staff presented, get back to a mindset of starting to look for those subsidies that will allow for homeownership, particularly in that area of town. So this may be a pipe dream right now, but I think once with a mind shift, we re-energize the idea of purchasing houses or condo units versus paying rent. I hope that you will be a leader in that effort if it's financially feasible for your project and what you are in the goals that you're trying to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Rainey. And then and then Alderman Rue Simmons. You're muted.
I know, I'm trying. I just want to repeat what I've said in the past at Economic Development and elsewhere. I've worked with Richard Koenig many, many times. He has several properties in my ward, and I can't say enough about him. Hopefully, he'll he'll just do what he always does. I've gone to other communities to support him. And I'm sure he's just loving the reception he gets here because I've been places where he didn't get this kind of reception. But he is just a really devoted housing. I don't know, he's a housing scholar, he's a housing doer, he's a housing developer, he's a housing manager. And thank you so much, Richard, for still being involved. I mean, we go so far back. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Alderwoman Rainey. For that. All right, Alderman Rue Simmons. Oh, no, okay.
It's okay.
Okay, so seeing no further discussion, again, just for for everybody, this was just here tonight for discussion as Paul mentioned, it's got to go out for a certain period of time, and it will come back and be on a probably, I guess, a P and D agenda and then City Council agenda. So, or City Manchesterly, just so everybody knows the process from here, can you just share that with us?
Yes, so we were just making the community aware of the partnership that's been formed. Super excited about this project and looking forward to potentially negotiating with the developer for this, the joint entity that's going to be formed for this project. So February 8th, first meeting in February, we're hoping to bring forward the authorization to negotiate for the sale of the property to be developed. And then there will be an entire process that will follow, which would then follow, you know, similar outline to our previous plant development projects. So there will be DAPR and then Plan Commission and then Planning and Development and then City Council.
Thank you for that. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for community neighbor input, all all of that on this project. So, all right, well, wonderful. Thank you pastors for coming here. Thank you, Richard, for for coming here tonight and sharing this with us. This was just for discussion, so we don't need to do a vote on this. So we're going to move now to the next item. Alderman Rainey, could you move SP4, please?
I will, I will. SP4 is Resolution 8R21 authorizing the city manager to initiate a request for proposal process for the repurposing of city-owned real property located at 506 South Boulevard. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so this has been moved and seconded. It's now open for discussion. Questions? Alderman Wynn.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't know whether the staff had anything to present on this. There was so, well, I will, I I have a lot to say about this, but what I might do first is allow the staff to make a presentation. But I would like to say before this gets started that I am unequivocally opposed to this lot ever being changed to R6. It was never part of any of the community discussions that this should ever be changed to R6. There is one section, one block of R6 in all of the third ward. It is the 900 block of Hinman. There is no other R6, and that that 900 block is the only place that would be appropriate for R6. So I want the community to know that. I also want the community to know that the council is not deciding tonight to rezone this property. What what we are deciding to do is to go out into the development community and get information. And the only way to do that is by going out for a request for proposal. We know what we want on this site. We know what the parameters of this site are. What we are looking for is the thing that we are not getting more of in the city of Evanston, which is three-bedroom units, family units that are affordable. In all of the rental, new rental buildings we've had, those are small units that are being built, and a portion of them are affordable, but they're not family-sized. And because we own this lot and we can work with Cook County, we have the opportunity to dictate what type of affordable housing will be built there. And so I have had community discussions. They have not been completed by any means because COVID interrupted us, but also because we didn't have the information that we needed. Every meeting was, well, what size building could be built there? How many units? What would be the footprint? Well, we don't know that. And so by going out for a request for proposal to the development community with the city's requirements, what we are saying we want, then we'll see what the development community comes back with and and determine for ourselves whether any of those things are desirable. But we have some baseline issues here that it has to be in the in context with the other buildings and the neighborhood around it. It has to have a family-size affordable units, and it has to accommodate the parking that is necessary, that's already in that lot. That lot is underutilized but partially utilized, and we don't want to lose those critical parking spaces. And it has to be in context with the rest of the community nearby. We can do that, but we need to figure out what what does the development community say? What can they do? And if they can't do it, then we'll figure something else out. But that gives us a starting point to continue to have a community discussion. And there is going to be more community discussion on this. It hasn't been complete, and the community is going to continue to have a lot of say on this. But what we did need to have was information so that we could say to the community, here's what can be built there. And it's not going to be an eight-story building. It's not going to be R6. That that is inappropriate at that site. So we will be having a lot of community discussion, but I just want to make it clear because there's a lot of misinformation out there in the community. And I am happy to talk to anybody about what we've done and what we are going to do.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn. Paul, we're going to go ahead then and turn it to you to talk to. And because so many people did raise this issue of changing of zoning and all that, if you could talk to that as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I want to thank Alderman Wynn for really kind of presenting much of what I wanted to present in my introduction. I think what we what we need to stress from a staff perspective is is we we need to execute on the City Council's vision and what the community has asked the City Council to do, and that is to to add more affordable housing units to to Evanston. So in order to do that on this particular site, we would like to go, we like to draft an RFP. And I want to stress that the reason you don't see an RFP attached to this is because we haven't drafted it yet. We are at the very beginning stages. We're at the starting line of a marathon, and I almost literally a marathon. I mean, remember, this started two years ago, and the Aldermen hosted over a 24-month period or 18 or 20-month period a number of meetings that typically you don't have for a project like this. And we're not done. So simply because you think that we're moving forward with the project, I I heard a number of individuals mention that they that we don't want to build this monstrosity, or we don't want to build these buildings. There is not a proposal proposia. So I want to focus on what this is about, and that's getting the City Council's input on what goes into the RFP. And we heard tonight very clearly that R6 is not going to happen, and staff will eliminate that. I'll eliminate that from my vocabulary on this project. So if we if we keep it at R4, and I I need to share this with the council so we can help, so you can help Sarah Flax and I put together this RFP. R4 gets us 12 units. We already have four, you know, we're considering partnering with the Housing Authority of Cook County. They already have four units on the site. So really, we're talking about a net gain of eight units. I would I would recommend the council not consider keeping it at R4 for that reason. Possibly consider a rezone to R5, which gets us, you can get 48 units. We did a zoning analysis with our team with a four-story kind of limit. I think that's probably a more reasonable, and it doesn't have to be total 48. It doesn't have to be four stories. It could be three and a half. But the point is, like, let's, if we're really going to achieve our goals in affordable housing and mixing it up and spreading it throughout the community, this is a great location to do that. So I promise you, I'm going to be as quick as possible, but I wanted to point out a few things that were said during public comment, and I want to be able to address it because I think it's really important. We are not building public housing. This is not going to be a Cabrini-Green, as I heard. Cabrini-Green is gone. The new Cabrini-Green is actually really nice. It's a mixed-income, highly sought-after residential. But if we're talking about the old Cabrini, come on, that model is dead. Nobody's building that. This is going to be a privately financed and privately owned. This is going to be a privately financed and privately owned, sorry, it's going to be a privately owned development that may have some public financing. And the city, if the city determines, or sorry, if the developers determine that in order for them to proceed, they need a land donation, it's not because we're trying to enrich a wealthy developer. It's because that land donation, the amount, the value of that land is turned into a tax credit that is then used to fund the construction of affordable units. So again, we are not looking to make 100% Section 8 building or 100% affordable. We're trying to figure out the best way to bring a mixed-income development that is economically feasible, and we only know that by doing an RFP to see what the private sector can provide. The city doesn't have $40 million to build it themselves. That's why we're doing this. Let me add a couple more bullet points I want to read through. I don't think a permanent skate park there is a better idea than affordable housing. I heard somebody mention that. I think that's a terrible idea. I think we need to consider the fact that we're close to Purple Line Station. And St. Francis Hospital is just a few blocks away. People forget that. That, there are a lot of people there that would love to be able to live in Evanston and walk to work. We should be thinking about that. I wanted to stress that Alderman Nguyen has had a number of meetings. I heard some people say that she's not connected at all. That's not true. Cook County residents in the four units, I personally invited them to attend Alderman Nguyen's meetings. I walked the neighborhood in, because I live down here. I literally handed invitations into people's doorknobs, their mail slots, et cetera. So that's not true. They're invited. They can choose not to attend, but they were invited. Alderman Nguyen mentioned, there's going to be a lot of opportunities to have public input. The very, we are at the starting line. We're going to have lots of input opportunities. I mentioned the land donation. I think I'll end it there, but I just wanted to clarify that. I also, again, the zoning, R6 is out. We won't mention it again. I think, I think we can achieve a lot with R4. And I'll leave it at that, or sorry, R5.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for, you know, the clarity in answering, you know, points that people raised during public comment. I know that's appreciated. We're going to go with Alderman Fleming and then Alderman Wilson.
Yeah, thank you. So to start off, I will say, as Alderman Rainey mentioned earlier, you know, just, I realize people live in the area and they have lots of feelings of which they should, but it's, it is a little disappointing to hear on one side, you know, the last four years, we need more affordable housing, we need bigger units, X, Y, and Z, and then we have an opportunity, and it's like, oh, no. For a variety of reasons, people don't want it. So that, you know, I think is a little bit disappointing as a resident and as a city council member. To this space, I have, you know, been asking about this space for a long time. I live not too far. I passed by it. It's a parking lot that's not well utilized for parked cars. It's a perfect space for all the reasons that staff mentioned earlier. I will say regarding the zoning, I'm no zoning expert. I'm a little concerned that we would go out so early in the process just to say we're definitely not doing R6. I realize, you know, this, people in the city have lots of opinions about tall buildings. We just went through that with the building over at 1900 Sherman, where those people, we were, you know, told them it's going to be a tall building. It's going to be great. It's going to be affordable units. And then to now go, you know, to another side of town and just right off the bat, say, there's no way in the world we do R6. I'm not saying we should do R6. As Paul mentioned, we don't know what is out there in the development community. But I think, you know, if we're going to look at rezoning and all these variances we give, we should look at them all over town and not just in certain places. It's just, you know, I think it's not good governance to totally rule something out so early on before we see any proposals. From Paul's description, I do agree, R4 isn't really getting us the bang for our buck, particularly if we're looking at larger units, which we know we need. I would love to see also in this proposal, or as we think about these, for these units to be accessible. I talked to a lot of people. Reba Place has some amazing and affordable units in my ward. You know, they're older buildings and they're not accessible. So there's a lot of people, as we talk about Asian in place, that need accessible units or families that need accessible units. So hopefully, Paul, there's a way we can work that language in as well. I think the parking, you know, is another thing, just like tall buildings. You're going to have people who say each unit needs a space. You're going to have people who say we don't need any spaces because everyone's on the bike and train. So I think that's going to be a conversation we need to have. I don't, you know, again, going past it now, it's really underutilized. I imagine with more units, we'll have more cars. But, you know, I think we should work that out somewhere as a compromise to not build less units because we say, hey, we need a, you know, car for every, every person there. I won't go into a whole lot, but I, you know, Alderman Nguyen, I know, I think I've asked you this last year before the pandemic, like, where are we at with this building? Let's get moving. And you were talking about community meeting. I didn't attend them. I trust that you had them. I, hopefully, the residents who are here who said they did not hear about them can sign up for a newsletter, however Alderman Nguyen is communicating with you all. But I think the conversations need to be not so much around, what's your vision for that lot? Or what do you want the building to look like? As much as we're going to have some affordable units on this space, whatever configuration they are, and how can we all embrace that and be good neighbors, right? I think for people to move into our community and hear the first thing was, nobody wanted you here. You know, it's not really speaking well of us as a community. So hopefully, as you're having these meetings, Alderman Nguyen, it can move past, you know, we're clearing up some of these things that are inappropriate, not inappropriate, that are missed in the community and moving towards how are we going to welcome these neighbors and wherever configuration they come in. It is a little bit unfortunate to hear some of the language about tall government projects and gang-infested Howard Street and all those things. It's, again, it's just kind of disappointing to hear that people still think that way about low-income residents. We heard on our first report, a lot of our low-income residents are African-Americans. So we're conflating race and stereotyping class, which is, again, something else that to think as a community, we'd say we don't do here in Evanston. So good luck, Alderman Nguyen, with those community meetings. They sound like they'll be very lively. And Paul, I'm looking forward to what this RFP brings us. So as you said, Alderman Nguyen, we have something to choose from. We're not just taking a guess. And I think the land use is marvelous. As you said, we don't have money. We have lots of land. We have lots of parking lots. And we are going to need to be creative with those things if we do want to have affordable housing, because we don't have lots of money and we're not going to ever have, I think, lots of money to start building. So hopefully, this is a way that we can get some units built. I would like them all to be, you know, lower to mid-income. I think that's much more important to me than the mixed income. But I will see what the development community brings forward, and we can make the best decision. Not giving away the hen house, but making a good decision with what we have.
Alderman Fleming? I just wanted to quickly respond to you to say that one of the, one of the meetings, the community meetings we had, we had a myth-busting section of the meeting where people tossed out their questions and we busted the myths. So we have been having these community discussions in which we are talking about the value of affordable housing, and we have been busting myths all along, so.
And I'm sure you have. It's just unfortunately that, you know, they continue, and we have to keep doing that as part of our.
And it will, we will continue to do that. We will continue to do that.
But I've spoken about this, as we talked about affordable housing. I've spoken about this a couple of times as a ninth ward, telling people that this might be coming down the pipeline and asking us to be good neighbors to the new residents who will live there. So I look forward to seeing what the RFP brings us.
Thank you. Did I, I forgot, did we have someone else that had, Alderman Wilson?
Thanks. I think between Alderman Nguyen, Mr. Zamazak, and Alderman Fleming, we covered 98% of what I wanted to say. But I just want to reiterate, I do agree, R6 does not seem to be in scale with the location. And also, it's just a different kind of model as far as what the mix of units is going to look like. So that doesn't seem like it would be particularly ideal for there. I think that this is a good opportunity for family housing and for accessible housing. So this is property that we own. We have the leverage. So other, you know, these other property projects that come at, come up are privately owned, privately developed, and we don't have the same kind of leverage, but we do have that here. So hopefully, we can take advantage of that and get some excellent proposals that'll serve a need that's not being met currently.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Sufferin?
Yeah, just want to be clear. So, and Paul, this may be a question for you, Alderman Nguyen, Alderman Wilson, whoever wants to chime in. What's the disadvantage of taking R6 off the table right now? As we try and get proposals and we want as many as possible, why would we, why would we take that off the table at this point when this is a city asset and this is one of our major goals? And I know Alderman Nguyen, I mean, I'm sure that you have residents in your ward who feel strongly, but it's a city asset. It's not a ward asset.
So let's, let's, let's just, I don't know if the city staff wants to. I know Alderman Nguyen wants to chime in on this, but. All right, seeing your comments. Okay, go ahead, Paul.
I'll briefly state, from a staff perspective, you know, when we were looking at R6, we're realistic and we're professionals, and some of us are even experts, right? I'll even dare say that. And R6, R6, you know, we were thinking it would get us a six-story building, which is a little bit taller than the neighborhood. I heard tonight that, you know, from at least adjacent neighbors, that they don't like that. And I think we heard from Alderman Nguyen that that wouldn't be a good fit. And so I would, at that point, I would step out as a profession and let the community process play out. But the only reason R6 was there because it would get us to six. We would never build an 85-foot building there. Just as a quick heads up. But Alderman Nguyen, I yield to you at this point.
Well, I, you know, looking at the zoning map, what's, this site is R4 right now. Directly across the street is R5 on Hinman. R6 is seven blocks north from there. So you're essentially going to take one lot and turn it into a different zoning designation of R6. And I know that we say that we're never going to build it to six, above six stories. The staff can say that. I'm sorry, Paul, to doubt you. But if we put R6 in this, it, the maximum building height is 85 feet. There's a development allowance that goes along with that. Someone's going to come in with 120-foot-tall building. Why would we put that out in an RFP when we know what the the battle royal that will happen if, when that comes back? Let's put out an RFP for something that we know is doable and acceptable in the community and achieves the goals that we have here, which is to get family-size affordable housing units. And we can do that. You know, I can't support R6 at this site. That's a really tall, really dense. And even if you say to a, in the development proposal, we're not taking anything above six stories, that's not how developers, I mean, developers just use that as a starting point. So, you know, I, I've told the community, I won't support R6. R6 is, it will stick out like a sore thumb. We want this to fit into the context of the community. It's multifamily and some two flats and three flats. If you look at that area, it's a really very unusual mixture of, of housing and uses on that site. But it's also a block and a half to the train. It's walk to Lincoln School. It's walk, longer walk to Nichols. It's walk to the lake. It's ideal for family affordable housing.
Well, I mean, I would assume that any informed proposer would have watched this meeting and would have, would taken into account the likelihood of opposition. But I just don't know why we would close off any possibility, and particularly when this is one of our biggest city-owned lots that we can convert into affordable housing, which we've said is one of our biggest goals. And at our meeting that we had tonight, which was supposed to be a whole lot of affordable housing, we spent more than a third of it talking about a skate park. If we're really about what we say we're about, we shouldn't limit anything right now. We should let the development community come with whatever they have. And then this council or the next council will have that discussion. But I think that, I agree with Alderman Fleming, limiting things on the front end is probably poor policy and bad governance.
I, and I disagree with you, Alderman Sufferin. I mean, we've seen over and over again that developers know what our zoning is in our downtown, and yet they persist with 33-story or 37-story buildings or the one at the Marion, which got a unanimous no vote at DAPR, a unanimous no note, no vote at the Plan Commission, and they insisted on still coming to the council. So, you know, based on my experience with developers, if you give them an inch, they take a mile. And in this instance, we, I don't want to waste the community time on something that's really not going to fit into the community. I want developers who are sensitive to the, to building something that actually isn't going to stand out as, oh, that's the affordable housing building. I want something that people are going to want to live in and feel like they're just a part of the neighborhood. So I mean, I think actually what, what happens is we'll end up using up a lot of staff time on, on, on proposals that come in that are R6 or above. And what we really want to do is concentrate our valuable staff time on realistic proposals that are going to come in.
I appreciate the high value of staff time, but isn't that what staff's job is? Is to evaluate proposals? And then apparently it is also to make long presentations at our meetings. But I just don't understand, if we say we're about affordable housing, we want the most affordable housing, we recognize that we're never going to have enough affordable housing, why we wouldn't try and get the most affordable housing we can on this city lot when that's the opportunity in front of us?
Well, then we should just change the zoning throughout Evanston and just upzone everywhere.
I think that's going to be part of the discussion for the next city council. But right now, we're talking about this lot, and it's a city-owned lot, and we should really try and maximize the amount of affordable housing we put on this lot, in my opinion. Obviously, we have a difference of opinion.
Right, well, we have a difference of opinion.
All right, so we've got another Alderman that wants to chime in, and that's Alderman Wilson.
Well, you know, I just, it's a completely different model, right? So, you know, we've got a number of these, you know, private buildings that are going up, and they are small units. They are not particularly well-suited for families at all. And I think, you know, this is, again, this is an opportunity where we have some leverage to get some family suitable housing built someplace. And this, you know, we're not trying to make the most money on this. We're not trying to make a profit. We're trying to use the fact that we own this to subsidize something that we're not getting enough of, you know, throughout the community. So it makes sense to me, and I think that if it's, you know, if you invite something that's, that's, you know, everybody knows isn't what the goal is, and people aren't going to watch this meeting, right? I think a couple of people pointed out, it's a long meeting. So even if they fast forward, they're not going to watch the meeting. They're going to look at the, they're going to look at the RFP. And I think it's just, it's fair to everybody who's going through the process to set the expectations up, you know, out upfront. And if we don't get anything that's any good, then we'll have to rethink the whole thing. So maybe we won't get a good proposal, and we have to go back to the drawing board and look at a zoning. But I think that the, you know, the desirability of the location and the potential subsidy we have is going to, is going to result in some family housing options.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, I just had a question for staff, and that is that everything on the, it looks like everything on the zoning map that's on the south side of South Boulevard is pretty much zoned R4. Is this lot in the middle of that R4? Does this lot touch R5 anywhere?
Alderman Nguyen mentioned across the street, there's examples of R5, but, you know, if, if south. Yeah, to the north.
Yeah, okay. So we go from Arnold Place, and then we go west. The only place where R4 actually touches R5 is right there by, wow, right there by Forest. Even east of Forest, you have to go before you touch R5. I'm just asking because I don't see, I don't think that this lot we're talking about actually touches R5. So would that be considered spot zoning? Is that a concern that we should be having?
Sure, and I'll run that by the law department. I don't, you know, South Boulevard, you know, is that considered a divider? Or does, you know, does the, you know, if I look at, if you're looking at 507 Hinman Avenue, that's, that, the resident of that house spoke tonight, that's an R5-zoned property. It's a two-flat.
Okay, well, I would just appreciate it if you'd ask that question. That's.
Sure, I'll follow up.
The other thing I would like to say is, is I don't want people to get worried about the reference to a future discussion about changing zoning citywide. I want to make sure that, I don't want people in my ward to worry that there's some secret plan to, from a new council to start changing zoning citywide. I can hear it now. I can hear the response to that now, and that wouldn't be good. So, thank you. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Fleming? And then Alderman?
Yeah, just to, to that point that Alderman, um, Fisk just made, I think, look, I'm not even on the planned, um, planning and development committee of the council, so this wouldn't be my discussion. But for the last four years, we have done, what sounds to you, you're saying is spot zoning. We've done text amendments, all these variances. We've, you know, we've done a lot of things where people have come and been frustrated that we've changed zoning or allow developers to do this or that, you know, in their block or near their home. And so I do think at some point, maybe it's the new council, there needs to be a conversation about zoning citywide. I'm not saying change your zoning, but I think we have in some ways set a precedent for developers, as Alderman Winn said, to come forward with these things and, you know, ask for a lot, whether we give it to them or not. And I think it, it might be worth it. And we talked about this even in redlining and segregation and all these kinds of things to look at our zoning overall as a city. I've talked to Ms. Knighton about this before. I don't think it's her plan, but, you know, we might have less frustration with people feeling like, you know, we, we built a tall building here, but then over here, we're only letting single-family houses go. And that's just my, my comment. I'm not saying to start that conversation today. I'm not making a referral. I'm just saying that is some of the frustration that I feel like I hear from people who are opposed to different things that they feel like, why do we have the zoning or why do we have this rule if we allow developers to do something else?
Ald, Alderman?
That, that I need, I, I think we need to explain that and that's all I'll say.
Alderman Winn?
Well, I, the spot zoning is, uh, the definition of spot zoning is when you single out a single parcel and you zone it to, to something else that is unlike anything else that's nearby. Uh, I mean, that's my understanding of what spot zoning is. Um, and the city, we are not, the city has never been supportive of that. So, um, I did also, I mean, this is a small, a, a small additional piece of information. When the city, uh, worked with, um, Dino Robinson to have Equity and Empowerment Commission had the redlining exhibit at the civic center, uh, it showed all the areas that have been redlined. And, you know, another aspect of those redlining maps is yellow lining. So what were the areas of the city that were considered yellow? Um, and I, interestingly enough, um, South Boulevard, the, the line, uh, uh, South Boulevard was a line and everything on the south side of South Boulevard was in a different category than properties north of, of South Boulevard. And it's interesting and that's why we have an, uh, an unusual housing stock along South Boulevard. You can see that, um, banks viewed it differently. And, uh, you know, we need to, we need to change that. That would, that, it wasn't redlining, but it was yellow zoned. And if you look at what they, just how they described it, it was pretty terrible.
Thank, thank you, Alderman. Uh, Paul, did you have something? And then I'm going to go to the city manager.
Okay, I had one last just point of knowledge, just as, and I think it's important, um, maybe, maybe you would disagree. But the properties along Chicago Avenue, including the maintenance garage for Catholic cemeteries, they are zoned C one A. I just wanted to clarify earlier in the evening, we heard that, um, that, you know, staff had made a mistake in referencing that they're commercial, uh, they are zoned C one A and that, that has a commercial kind of characteristic to it. So, um, I wanted to point that out, has kind of a different feel as you are next to the train station and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, city manager, Storley?
Thank you. I think we have enough feedback to start drafting the RFP. I anticipate that will take us, you know, three, three-ish weeks and we would return to the council to review the RFP before we release it. Uh, so that would be sometime in February. We'll make sure that we get the word out about that. Um, I just wanted to also say thank you to everybody who gave, uh, feedback tonight from the council members. I think the discussion was really fantastic and we really got a lot of good direction from you. So thank you for that. It was a lot of information, a lot to absorb, but all very good stuff. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Any more discussion on, on the part of the council members? This is an item for action tonight, which required a vote if, uh, we want the city manager to move forward with initiating a R, RFP. The one thing that we did not talk about, um, that was raised at, at a public comment was whether if such an RFP is put together, whether it's something that'll be put out so the, the neighbors or public can comment on it, or if it's something the council's just going to direct the city manager to put out. So that hasn't.
We'd see it before it goes out, right? I mean, we'd have to approve it.
It's coming back to the council.
Many times RFPs don't, right? I mean, we did, city does their business and they send RFPs out. I mean, contracts come to us, bids, you know, ultimately recommendations, uh, come to the council, but not necessarily RFPs. I mean, we did it with Harley Clark. That's the only one I can think of.
City manager, what were your, what was your plan?
Uh, I just said that we would bring it back in February for a review and approval by the council. If that's not the direction that, that the council wants to go, then let me know. But that's what I was understanding from the conversation we just had.
All right, so let's go ahead. We, I see no further comment. Uh, city clerk, could you please take the roll on SP four, approval of resolution eight R twenty-one, authorize the city manager to initiate a request for a proposal process for the repurposing of city-owned real estate, uh, located at five oh six South Boulevard to Hippen, move second it.
Yes, Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman, uh, Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Winn.
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
All right, so on a ninety-zero vote, uh, SP four passes the city council, uh, so that RFP will be initiated. We're now going to move to call the wards. Uh, first up tonight is Alderman, uh, Alderwoman for Simmons.
No report.
All right, Alderman Suff.
Uh, January twenty-eighth, joint ward meeting with the seventh ward, uh, with Dina Robinson and Alderman Raven Rue Simmons. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Uh, Alderman Revelle.
Um, Alderman Sufferton took the words out of my mouth, so I hope a lot of people will come to our ward meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Excellent. Uh, Alderman Rainey.
Um, we had a really good meeting with the CTA and, uh, we're going to have a follow-up meeting soon regarding the yellow line, which is interesting. I'm wondering if the yellow line came from the yellow line, uh, versus the red light. I don't know. Um, anyway, uh, Mr. Mayor, would you announce again about your meeting on Friday, um, before the evening's over?
I will, I'll do it at the end of, of roll call. Thank you. Um, Alderman, Alderwoman Fleming?
Yeah, uh, uh, ninth ward meeting tomorrow at seven o'clock.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Uh, no report.
Alderman Winn?
Uh, yes, I want to thank everyone who signed up for my office hours, um, this past Thursday through, uh, uh, at first it was Google meets, but then we switched it to Zoom. Um, I look forward to having more of them next month. Uh, and then I also, uh, want to remind everyone in the third ward that we're having a town hall meeting on Thursday, January twenty-eighth at seven PM. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Popular Night. Uh, and then Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Okay, and then, uh, just a reminder to everybody, I have feel that a few, uh, constituent emails tonight, as I imagine council members have too, about, uh, the vaccines and, and what's going on. I promise we will get more information. Our public information officer this week will get another update on where we stand here. I know that's a, a priority for everybody. Uh, we are going to have a coronavirus Q and A, uh, this Friday at noon. Uh, and, um, and information will be put out in the Thursday newsletter that we send out to the community. It will also be on the city's website, but it'll be twelve o'clock. On Friday, we will have doctors from Amida St. Francis and North Shore, along with our public health director, Ike Ogwell. So please join us. We will answer, uh, all the questions we have time to answer. Um, and we're already getting them in, um, right now. So thank you very much. Thank you for, uh, coming out, uh, for a meeting tonight. If I could just ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second? All right, city clerk, could you please take the roll to adjourn this meeting?
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Winn.
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk Reed. On the ninety-zero vote, the Evanston City Council is adjourned. We will, uh, have our next regular city council meeting next Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.